I would like to just read a couple of things for everybody in the audience, whether they're for or against anything that's important to the town council. It's important to the town. It's important to do things the right way. This is a proclamation that the town council voted a while back. The town of Bridgewater presents this proclamation in support of the Bridgewater citizens for civility and respect. Whereas Bridgewater, established in 1656, is a town with a diverse population of 27,000 people that has enjoyed a strong tradition of civil rights in which hate speech is not tolerated, whereas the citizens of Bridgewater have long upheld a tradition of respect which guarantees civil rights for all, whereas incidents of hate speech and verbal assaults directed at individuals because their appearance or clothing choice, which reflects particular cultures and is in direct opposition with the traditions and values of the town. The town of Bridgewater respects the right of all persons in our town to live without fear of verbal or physical assaults and exercise freedom of cultural expression through choices of attire, religious practice, and speech. Be it therefore resolved that the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, is declared a community of civility where intolerant speech and behavior are unacceptable, thus ensuring that our town remains a respectful place to live, work, attend school, visit, and conduct business. I will also read from our council rules and procedures, which is Section 36, Spectator Decorum. Guests will be allowed in the gallery of the council chamber when the council or council committee is in session. No demonstrations of approval or disapproval from guests shall be permitted, and if such demonstrations are made, the gallery may be cleared by the president. So, let's try to abide by those guidelines. I don't want to have to enforce them at all. I trust you all to do the right thing. That having been said, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on, before we get to approval of minutes, I want to pass on condolences. Excuse me?
Let's let them know where their seats are.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Before we move on, I want to pass on condolences. A letter of condolence to the family of Robert L. Coolen upon his passing on 17 December 2017. Mr. Coolen served in the United States Navy during the Korean War. He was an active volunteer at the Bridgewater Senior Center and various veterans organizations. Also, a letter of condolence to the family of John F. Donovan upon his passing of 7 December 2017. Mr. Donovan served in the 64th Bomb Squad, United States Air Force Europe during the Korean War, United States Army. A letter of condolence to the family of Mr. John J. Rafferty upon his passing of 27 November 2017. Mr. Rafferty served in the United States Navy during World War II. A letter of condolence to the family of John S. Needs upon his passing on 26 November 2017. Mr. Needs served in Troop C, 1st Recon Battalion, 6th Armored Division, United States Army during the Vietnam War. And a letter of condolence to the family of Mr. Arthur R. Carlson, Sr., upon his passing on 21th of November 2017. Mr. Carlson served in Battery A, 65th Anti-Aircraft Gun Battalion, 25th Infantry Division, 8th Army Group, United States Army with combat engagements during the Korean War. If we could all have a moment of silence for those heroes who have passed. Moving on to the agenda. First item is approval of minutes.
I move to approve the -- Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of our December 5th second meeting.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Souza. Discussion, Mr. Gallagher?
No discussion.
Mr. Souza?
No, sir.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to announcements from the president. For those of you who paid attention all the way till the end of last meeting, you realize that Councilor Perry has stepped down from the council. He's moved. He is no longer in Precinct 4, and per the charter, he can no longer serve to represent that district. In accordance with that, we have an ordinance. We have a charter procedure which can't come into play. We have an ordinance, D. 2013-001, which establishes procedures relative to implementing Section 2.5 of the town charter. If you're interested, you can find it online. But essentially, we're going to have an open application period for residents from Precinct 4 who want to apply for being a councilor. You get to meet all your friends, by the way. And the period will be open from December 19th through January 12th of next year. People should send a letter of interest in any background information that they want the council to consider to both the attention of our council clerk, Ms. Holmberg, and the town clerk, Ms. Merrily Hunt. And then we will review those and have a meeting in which we invite everybody in to talk to the council and allow public comment about any of the folks who are interested later in January. So, I appreciate that.
Excuse me, Mr. President. So, that term just goes until the spring election? Is that right?
That term goes till the end of the term that Mr. Perry had, so it would be the next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. We have proclamations for -- well, we'll just read it. Proclamation. Whereas New England citizens rely on their town's annual reports for historical information and documentation, whereas the town of Bridgewater did not publish an annual report from 2009 until 2017, and the 2016 Town Administrative Code required the town clerk's office to do so, whereas the town lacked resources to gather and format information to produce an annual town report. Whereas formatting Bridgewater Annual Town Report reconfigured to match the new administrative code was a rigorous undertaking, whereas professionalism, expert attention to detail, excellent formatting skills, and exceptional technical capacity were required to create a 2016 Annual Town Report. Whereas Rebecca Fleisch-Cordero provided the editorial and technical skills necessary to successfully complete the 2016 Annual Report project, whereas Rebecca Fleisch-Cordero offered her considerable talents and service to the town of Bridgewater free of charge. Therefore, the town council wishes to thank Rebecca Fleisch-Cordero for her volunteerism and dedication to the success of this product -- project. Signed by the Bridgewater Town Council and certified by the town clerk, Ms. Merrily Kenny Hunt. Is Ms. Cordero here? Ms. Cordero. [applause] Okay. We're up to Citizens Open Forum. I'm sure nobody wants to speak tonight, so we'll move on to appointments. No. Just kidding, folks. Just kidding. I will ask, in all sincerity, we do have a large crowd here. I don't know who's going to speak for, who's going to speak against, whatever comes up. You have a chance at this point in time to say whatever you want about on the agenda or about what we're doing or not doing as a council, et cetera. I have a feeling what a lot of people are here to talk about, but that's just my gut instinct. What I will ask, again, is that we try not to be repetitive. We try not to say, "Yes, I agree. Yes, I agree." If we can bring new information, I know we've had about three or four months of discussion about this, and, you know, any new information that can be brought, I appreciate that. I will be very strict about our three-minute timeframe because we have a lot of people here, and I want to respect their time, and I want to make sure that we respect the council's time. We have a full agenda after we do these other things, as you can see. So, with that said, and again, trusting the people here because you guys are great people, anyone want to speak at Citizens Open Forum? Yes, sir. If you could just identify yourself for the record and where you come from.
Matt Putnam, 135 Hudson Street. I'm going to offer these comments on behalf of Ed Evaldi, who couldn't be here tonight. Well, it's finally here. Tonight's the night when you, our elected officials, will determine what's best for Bridgewater. For the past five or six months, the citizens of Bridgewater, as well as numerous public officials and business owners, have voiced their opinions on whether our town should allow retail marijuana sales and cultivation. The question is, have you been listening? It's only been within the past month that the pro-marijuana people have risen up under the guise of playing fair to them. I'm sure you've seen their advertisements and Facebook page stating that this issue is about fairness. Really? Is that the best they can come up with? Why don't they talk about how their businesses will improve the quality of life for Bridgewater citizens, or how their marijuana crops will be a good thing for society in general? Let me remind you that through our elected officials, we, the people of Bridgewater, have a right to decide what kinds of businesses are good for our town and represent the values that we want to hold for the future. Those values do not include producing crops and -- whose values do not include -- oh, Lord. Producing crops and products that we know will degrade the society in which we live. We all know that both Theory Wellness and ACS are owned and operated by people outside of Bridgewater, and thus they have no vested interests in its people. Their primary interests lie in making money, not in ensuring the values or welfare of our citizens of those of the surrounding towns. In fact, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there have been people hired by the marijuana industry going around town this past week handing out propaganda. Several of them have shared --
You have one minute, sir.
Several of them have shared that they're not in favor of recreational cultivation. They're only doing it for the money. It's no coincidence that the organization represented here tonight, Bridgewater Cares, has deep concerns about what is happening in our town and in neighboring communities, and we assume that you do too. Bridgewater has been known in the past as a farming town, producing wholesome crops and livestock. We ask you envision a future where if we choose to allow it, Bridgewater becomes known for its marijuana crops. Is that really what we collectively want? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Mr. Baumgarten, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Hi. Sam Baumgarten, 60 Short Street. And I just want to restate some comments to you that I shared via email, so that they're in public. The vote on the complete ban of recreational marijuana, including the prohibition of medical facilities to provide the recreational crop to other towns, is now upon you. The events of this past week have brought this vote into a stark focus. The town has been invaded by the marijuana industry, trying to get folks to persuade you not to impose the full ban. As noted, these folks have hired people to proselytize and have even put up a Facebook page which was rather suspicious with pictures of towns other than Bridgewater and labeled "Bridgewater Residents." I doubt if it was started by residents. This, to me, is like the strategy of the tobacco companies, going back to the days when we were fighting for no smoking laws. The tobacco companies did everything in their power to prevent those laws by creating lobby and front groups to get their way, and this is sort of what's happening here, I fear. I don't think anybody's going to go out of business if we ban recreational sales. If you choose not to support the full ban, you will clearly be voting to support the marijuana industry, not the residents of Bridgewater. This is a vote not only for standing up for good health practices, but also for resisting the wilds of big business, and, without being a little too dramatic, a vote for the soul of Bridgewater. As a member of the Bridgewater Rainham District's Health Advisory Committee for 11 years, I know that considerable time and energy is being spent on social-emotional issues, with substance abuse being a major factor. We should not be supporting recreational marijuana use in any town. Moreover, I don't think we should be swayed by dollar signs. Usually, the fancy projections never come through for what the town is going to earn, and this, for me, is more to do with health and our philosophy of life as opposed to how much money we will bring in.
You have one minute, sir.
I just implore you to stand on the side of good health practice, to resist the industry and preserve the soul of Bridgewater by supporting a complete ban on recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten. Next, sir? If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Sure. My name is Michael Appolito, 52 South Street, Bridgewater. Aside from getting my degree in physics in Bridgewater, being a part of this community and doing a lot of things in it for a lot of years, living here for almost 20 years, and being a schoolteacher, I come here, and I was going to say this anyway, but then I heard these people talking about these negative effects and the ills, the soul of Bridgewater being lost. I don't know if anyone's ever heard of CBD, but that's one of the things that's cultivated over at Theory Wellness. And haven't allowing your residents, our residents, to be able to buy CBD from them, it's non-psychoactive, okay? Never mind, no one's ever died from marijuana, and heroin overdoses, and the opioid crisis is, you hear about it every day. But so, I ended up developing IBS, Irritable Bowel Syndrome, and, you know, I hadn't, you know, I wasn't smoking weed and nothing like that for years and years and years, right? And I developed that, and had an endocrinologist, had a lot of issues, couldn't find a solution. Anyway, I did get my medical card, and Theory Wellness has a product that's better than any product anywhere, the CBD tincture, that has allowed me to not just be better, but actually start to expand my diet from this rigorous diet that I used to be on and have a lot of issues even still. So, when we're talking about this issue and we're trying to vilify a plant, you know, and we talk about industries and pharmaceutical industries, if we want to talk about who's lobbying who and who controls things in society, please consider that this is not an ill, and a lot of people are not aware of the science because it's still a Schedule I narcotic, and science can't be done testing on it in the United States.
You have one minute, sir.
I'd really like you to consider, please, that this really is a medicine, and it can heal people. A friend of mine lives in Colorado. He's in his 60s, and I was telling him about what CBD did for me, and he took it within the last three months, and he's reporting to me, he's like, "Michael, my knees! I can walk up the stairs again without aches and pains!" And I'm going to tell you, Theory Wellness, I've been around other places. They are the best, and the way they conduct business is exceptional. So, you know, and I'm not anything but just a resident of Bridgewater and someone who cares, and I heard about this, and I was like, "Wow." They want to -- I don't think they realize what they have in Bridgewater. They have someone that's awesome, and it doesn't hurt people. It helps them. Thank you for your time. Happy holidays and have a nice weekend.
Thank you, sir. We're not going to clap, please, people. We're not going to clap, please, people. We're not showing favor or disfavor. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Next, ma'am. Yes, could you identify yourself for the record?
My name is Jean Del Monte. I live at 37 Fieldstone Circle. Council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for your service to the town. I've been in Bridgewater for 45 years, raised my children here, and now they're raising their six children here, one of whom attends the university. I know the opinion has been expressed by the council that the council doesn't want to hear the same comments over and over again, but I feel it's important for all residents' voices to be heard, even if it's to say many times we do not want pot shops in Bridgewater. We hope that as a council, you will opt out of recreational marijuana. I feel we have the quintessential New England college town here and do not want to see that change. Everything may not be perfect, but introducing recreational marijuana sales will not help that image. I get that if someone wants to purchase marijuana, it may already be readily available to them, but we have a lot of impressionable young people living, studying, and working in this town. I believe that by waving marijuana in front of them, which is what it will be doing, sends a terrible mixed message. It says, "We don't want you using it, but we do have it for sale." It's my understanding that the marijuana industry has hired people to go door-to-door in this town, asking to sign a petition with the comment, "The person knocking on the door doesn't want to lose his job." My question is, they're already selling medical marijuana. If someone's been hired to cultivate marijuana for retail sale, either in or out of Bridgewater, they're putting the cart before the horse. I don't believe any cultivator here in town has been promised retail recreational sales. So, why have they hired people to do so? I would also like to ask why the marijuana businesses in town currently are not opening and operating their businesses in their hometown. I believe the marijuana industry is doing what Big Tobacco did --
You have one minute, ma'am.
-- back in the 40s and 50s, telling everyone smoking was good and nicotine was not habit-forming. Several years ago, this town voted to change our form of government to a nine-member council. That means nine individuals speak for over 26,000 residents. So, nine individuals need to do what is best for the town, and that is opt out of recreational marijuana. When considering your vote, please vote with these other 25,901 residents in mind.
Thank you, Mrs. Del Monte. Next, sir? Step up. Identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Derek Januskis. I live at 116 Green Street in Bridgewater.
Thank you.
And tonight, I'd like to present my opinion toward the council, and I'd like to bring about the idea of compassionate care. Now, my father is a person that had three back surgeries and spent all of my life being addicted to opioid medicine and will never be able to enjoy the freedom of life again. Every day, he has to talk to me about aches and pains that could easily be dealt with from something that's been around this earth for thousands of years. And recreational shops aren't somewhere where children can go freely and just obtain pot or whatever else that these places are selling. You have to be 21 is legitimate business that will be conducted by legitimate people. If someone who is 16 wants to get something right now, they can go down the street and find it, and it's unregulated, and anything can happen to these people. And with these places that will be here or in neighboring towns, this will place a stop to those avenues. There will be legitimate businesses in place, and it will help fund the process of creating medical use for people that actually depend on it. There are people right now that are being told that their diseases are incurable. There are people being told that their diseases are unmanageable, and there are children right now who can have the ability to ride their bicycle because they're able to have CBD oil available to them. There are people with seizures that were told they would never live a life without seizures, and they can do so. And so, all I'd like to tell you tonight is to think about the compassionate care that can be provided to these citizens and to the citizens around our town. We don't have to live in a world where all you are told is that if your doctor can't provide it for you, then you're out of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I just noticed, as you were walking away, it seems like you're wearing a sticker. Could you please take it off? Anybody else who's wearing a sticker, if you could please take it off? I'd remind everybody, Section 36 of Spectator Decorum. Guests will be allowed in the gallery of the council chamber when the council or council committee is in session. No demonstrations of approval or disapproval from guests shall be permitted, and if such demonstrations are made, the gallery may be cleared by the president. So, thank you all so much for respecting that. I appreciate that. Next, sir? Who's up next? Yes, sir. If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Hi. I'm Bill Akins, 5 Oak Middle Place. I'm a relatively new resident. I am a father of a three-year-old girl that I adopted through DCF, who was born with drugs in her system and very much against recreational pot. And I have listed a -- I downloaded off the Facebook page from the people who are for the cultivation, recreational cultivation, and they make some points here. I was going to go in there and go through the points about how it just doesn't make sense. One of the more -- the biggest one I have is that there's no difference between medical and recreational marijuana. There is. We just talked about -- someone just talked about a cannabinoid called CBD. That is a non-psychoactive cannabinoid. THC is the psychoactive. I downloaded from Theory Wellness their product menu, and I'd like to go over it a little bit. We go down their flowers. THC content from mimosa, which is sativa, clementine, and purple punch. It's described as having a unique flavor profile with strong citrus and hints of Hawaiian punch, the children's drink. THC content, 22.5%. CBD, 0.0. Go GOG. I'm going to go down to another one. I'm going to skip that one. Go to jilly bean. THC content, 17.6. Remember, THC is the psychoactive drug. It's named after a jelly bean that is very close to a child's candy, okay? It has a TH -- it has a CBD of 0.0. We look at Samoas, which is a hybrid of OG Kush and Girl Scout cookies.
You have one minute, sir.
Again, THC, 22.4% with a CDB -- a CBD of 0.0. And then, if we go over to the edibles, because I don't have a lot of time, they have peanut butter cookies, chocolate mudslides, honey sticks like you get at CN Smith that has pot in it, and gummy chews that are, sounds like it's off of a Skittles package. Sour raspberry, green apple, raspberry, and another type of raspberry, and mango is the only one CDB. I mean CBD. I question how legitimate this is as a medical facility. I say it's more of a recreational facility in the guise of a medical facility, and how was that going to be with the recreational cultivation that they want?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir? If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Evan Maris, Ledwood Drive. Just like to start off by saying thank you again for being here. Also, I would just like to start off by saying that today, we're not debating whether medical marijuana should be allowed in this town. We've already decided that many people in Bridgewater Cares would strongly say that we are not for taking away medical marijuana. It's already in the town, so we shouldn't even be talking about that. And I'd like to start with my speech that my family has lived in Bridgewater for 22 years, which is my whole life. I don't know any other place besides this town to call home. Growing up, we led such busy lives that we really never got the chance to understand this community. Like everyone here, their lives are chaotic, and over the last few months, I realized why so many people in my neighborhood grew up in this town and decided to raise their kids here. There is a sense of pride from people in this town. There's a strong sense of community of people who genuinely care about what kind of town they will leave to the generations after them. After 22 years, I feel that I have become a part of that community, the community that cares about what kind of town will be left for those after me. I remember being a little kid, riding my bike downtown, going to the old Friendly's. Everyone used to go there in the summers. Today, I would be concerned if I saw an eight-year-old riding his bike downtown. I drive home from school, and I see worn and torn buildings, and to be quite frank, it pisses me off. I don't see any places where kids congregate. All I see are tattoo shops, nail salons, and smoke shops. The memories of this town that I hope the next generation will be able to enjoy are deteriorated. It's sad, and what's even sadder is that members of this town council want to add to the deterioration. They want to deteriorate the reputation that we once had as a quaint New England small town. If it were such an amazing opportunity for Bridgewater to bring this into our town, we would -- I'm sorry. If it were such an amazing opportunity for this town, do you think there would be such an uproar and opposition? What we need is to bring back the things that made the people of Bridgewater proud to be a part of this community, small businesses that you would feel safe knowing your children were at with their friends, not a cultivation field for marijuana. I don't care how far down --
You have one minute, sir.
I don't care how far down Elm Street it is. I don't want it in my town. I don't want it in my backyard, and it's not going to be in Bridgewater. I hope that after the months of residents coming to meetings, showing that we do not want -- If it were such an amazing opportunity for this town, do you think there would be such an uproar and opposition? What we need is to bring back the things that made the people of Bridgewater proud to be a part of this community. Small businesses that you would feel safe knowing your children were at with their friends, not a cultivation field for marijuana. I don't care how far down-
You have one minute, sir.
I don't care how far down Elm Street it is. I don't want it in my town. I don't want it in my backyard, and it's not going to be in Bridgewater. I hope that after the months of residents coming to meetings, showing that we do not want recreational marijuana in this town, you respect that. The Bridgewater Cares group and other citizens of this town have been advocating for a ban for many reasons, but the main reason is because they love this community and they want to see it move forward. There are no paid canvassers, no paid dinners in this organization, unlike those of ACS and Theory who are trying to bribe people to show up tonight, and it worked. It sounds like something people in Washington would do, and I don't think Americans like Washington very much because of their corruption. It's done, it's all done by people who truly care about this town. So I ask you, please vote for a ban, respect the citizens that you were elected by, do not let outsiders control this town. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was perfect three minutes, by the way. Thank you. Yes, sir. State your name for the record.
Mark Bloom, 180 Main Street, Bridgewater. First, I'd like to thank the council for taking the time to hear the citizens. Secondly, I'd like to say that I'm a single parent who suffers from osteoarthritis. I have to have both hips replaced. If it wasn't for places like Theory offering the medications that they offer, I wouldn't have been able to walk up the stairs to get here this evening. There isn't a day that doesn't go by that I am not in chronic pain. And when my orthopedic surgeon came to me and said, "This is the medications that we can give you to keep you from being in pain on a daily basis," I asked my middle brother, who's a pharmaceutical rep, what he thought, and he put his foot down, and he says, "I don't care what they say. I don't want my little brother on that crap." "What are you doing now?" He would ask me for my pain, and I would tell him. Through places like Theory, I can go and I can get medication in the form of edibles, as one person had mentioned. And they mentioned the THC contents of different products, and different products do have a different THC content. Different products do not contain CBD oils, just like different alcohols have different amounts of alcohol in them. The medications, when you get them from your doctor, from the pharmacy, all have a certain milligram that is on them. These medications that are provided by Wellness and places like Wellness are regulated and put in place so that people can get the amount of medication that they need to handle the different problems that they're having. I have various friends that have been heroin addicts that are now off of that needle. They are no longer part of the opioid problem because they've gotten help through places like Wellness, like Theory. I have friends that suffer daily from fibromyalgia.
You have one minute, sir.
Women that I have gone to college with that can no longer get out of bed every morning because of the amount of pain that they're in. But through the help of CBD oils and the other medications that are being made prevalent day by day through the groundbreaking technologies that are coming out with people that are finally funded to do research on cannabis and cannabis oils and CBD oils and the different extracts that come from it. Now, back in the day, our forefathers didn't have a problem being hemp farmers and raising the strongest fiber on the face of the planet. I'm sure back in the day, many farmers here in Bridgewater didn't have a problem with their excess corn crops making corn liquor either. It's time we face the fact that the world is changing, and so is our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next. Yes, ma'am, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
I'm Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. I first want to, I think a lot of people are confused that we're not debating medical marijuana here at all, and I'm not saying nobody should be on it. That's, they're, medically, they need it, they need it. What we're debating here and hoping that you vote for is an all total ban of recreational marijuana. Two totally different subjects. So I just want to mention that because I hear it, and I sympathize with you, I get it. We're not debating that at all. I'm here again to show my, myself, my husband, and my son, who's in college right now, how much we support a total ban. As many have said many times at all the other previous meetings, and I think I've been just about every one, I want to just, this town would not benefit from it. I politely remind you that the majority of the town voted not to legalize it. Not legalizing doesn't mean we want retail shops. If we don't want it legalized, we don't want retail. And it's not going to benefit this town by having it. This town will not fold, it will not go under by not having it. And I don't see why it's being connected to the medical. Medical came in when, before retail was legalized, they should have had no expectations that retail would keep them going. If they're that bad off that they can't keep going because we don't have retail, then that's a fact of life with the business. You, you, you deal with your business, but I don't understand why it keeps getting connected together. It's separate. So, and Mr. Fitzgibbons Enterprise, I know doesn't always quote things correctly, but I read today that it quoted you as saying that, you know, the medical places would be in a tough spot if we allowed a total ban. I don't get that.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Okay. But if you look at other towns, there's a lot of towns that are banning it. There are towns that voted to legalize it and are banning it. Milton is one of them. You just have to listen to the town. We, the majority, don't want it. It's not going to benefit us. I implore you to do the right thing. Ban all retail. I can say that a lot of these people that want it would say, "Not in my neighborhood." And you say, "Oh, great, we'll put it down on Elm Street." People on Elm Street don't want it either.
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
So I implore you to please vote for a total ban. Thank you.
Thank you.
On recreational. Let me just say recreational.
Next, there's an area, if you could identify yourself for the record.
I will. Pat Neary, Lakeside Drive, Bridgewater. Good evening, councilors. We're here again, and as before, I do want to thank you for your service. We know that you have only the best interest of Bridgewater at heart, and we're here tonight with the hope that you will continue to do the right thing for our town. I do not have a horse in this race. My children are grown and probably older than all of you, except maybe you, Frank. I too, I just want what's best for the town. And that would be a town without retail marijuana stores anywhere in town. And encouraging the cultivation of a drug, marijuana, for distribution to other towns simply for the enrichment of the current medical marijuana facilities that were approved as nonprofits is not a wise move. None of us in town want that to happen. And Mrs. Hanson made it very clear that we're not objecting to the medical facility. It's just propaganda that was spread around, and they're going to be closed if we pass whatever, but this is strictly talking about recreational. Some of you may know that I was in the real estate field for many years, and I still follow it. There is a new category in real estate listings you should be aware of. It is marijuana-free town. You can check that box, and I want to have us be able to check that box because it's really going to affect real estate values, not only lifestyle, but-
You have one minute, ma'am.
-but real estate values as well. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Neary. Next, I'm going to, I'm going to take any residents from Bridgewater before I enter, to ask the council to entertain any non-residents of Bridgewater. I think that's just the way it should go. So I just wanted to make that clear to folks in the, in the gallery. Yes, ma'am, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Yeah, Elizabeth Gerard.
Could we, could we quiet down, please? Could we quiet down? I'm sorry, Ms. Gerard.
Elizabeth Gerard, Oak Street.
Thank you.
I've been living in Bridgewater for about 13 years. I love it here. My husband's family's from here. As far as keeping recreational marijuana off your streets, it's too late. It's there. It's been there for a zillion years. Because of the cultivation of the marijuana at Wellness, at Theory Wellness, which I do use, I have fibromyalgia, I had to stop working in 2012 because I couldn't walk. Look at me, okay? And I'm not high, and I do use marijuana, okay? I think this town needs to really put their thinking caps on because this town needs money. The taxes are horrible. Okay? I'm sorry if you disagree. I think that having this here has helped a lot of people get jobs and provide more jobs because I don't think a farmer should be unable to sell his crops. Why should you be able to sell only in one place? That's not right. A farmer is growing his crops to make money. Hello, that's what we all do. We do what we do to make money. Okay? Let's just boil it down to what it is. These people want to make money? Okay, fine. Why are you going to stop them? How can, why are you going to stop a farmer from selling his crops? That just doesn't work for me. Okay?
You have one minute, ma'am.
If your children want to purchase marijuana and use it on the streets, that's on you. You talk to your kids about that. That's not the fault of the store owner.
If you could, if you could-
I'm sorry. It's not the fault of the store owner, and it's not the fault of whoever that child got that marijuana from. It wasn't from a facility that was, they grow their product, they know what it is, they test it.
And you have 30 seconds.
I know what I'm taking with them. If you get it off the streets, you don't. And if your kids are smoking and they smoke something that's got pesticides on it, they may get really sick. Wouldn't you rather have them using something that's not going to do that? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Yes, my name is Peter Sotera. I live at 31 Fieldstone Circle. I've been a resident of Bridgewater for 40 years, and I've been a resident of Methuen for 40, so I've lived 40 years in both. I'm not here to speak on pro or for or against or anything, just for information for people in the audience, because the council, I believe, already knows this. I was one of the first town councilmen under this former government 45 years ago, and it was two things were drilled in my head. One, short, brief, and to the point. The second, every town, every precinct counselor is in that seat to represent his people, and it's his job to find out what the issue, pros and cons are, and then vote. One, what is people want in his precinct, and two, what's best for the town. The town councilors at large have the entire town to represent. The precinct councilors have their precinct. If they do their job, you do your job, see what the people want, what's best for the town, and I think you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd also add, every woman also.
Thanks.
Mrs. Loesch is doing a great job. Yes, ma'am, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Hi, Natalie Justice, Tim Brown Avenue. You all need a deep breath, a little. Okay, so I thought a lot about what was important to emphasize here tonight, and it's important for anyone who questions why we want pot shops and recreational cultivation banned to know it's not just our kids and our towns we care about. We truly stand by the notion that allowing cultivation for families and surrounding communities, that recreational use will harm them. Providing drugs to youth in other towns is not something Bridgewater should want to be a part of. I want to clarify, this is not a medical marijuana that we are against. It's strictly recreational. Like, that is like the bottom line for us. As a mother of teenagers, I really want to give a shout out to all the Bridgewater Cares members for putting in the time and the willpower to helping our town stay informed. They have done this with 100% pure intent. I know this, and passion for our community. They're dedicated people trying to keep drugs out of our children's hands. You know, as a mom, I just felt compelled to be here. It's my duty as a mom to fight for my children and the children of Bridgewater and neighboring communities. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, anyone else from the town like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Jericho Moore, 285 Whitman Street, Bridgewater.
Did you get that? No, the clerk didn't get that.
Jericho Moore. I'd like to state first that I don't have a horse in this race. I have no interest in medical marijuana or recreational marijuana. I don't use, and I don't plan to. That said, I do recognize that recreational marijuana is the wave of the future. It's coming. Right now, we have a system in place where people who seek out use of marijuana have to buy it from either a medical facility, like we have in Theory Wellness, or they have to buy it from someone else. And we want to introduce this new wave to our town in a way that it's going to be safe and efficient for everyone who wants to be involved. That said, you need something like Theory Wellness to be able to come in, have knowledge of their pot products and how to cultivate them, to make sure that they're safe for consumption, to make sure that they're safe for use, and just to make sure that they're safe for everyone who's interested. That said, I think that there's a lot of misconception about what recreational marijuana will do to the town. We've seen recreational marijuana be introduced in other states and in other places, and there have been studies done on the effects that recreational marijuana has had on these places. And essentially, the change is next to none. There's been next to no change in the use of drugs, harder drugs, and incarceration and anything with the staunch exception, and you can see this especially in Colorado where it was legalized, of the tax revenue, which I know some people don't want to talk about the soul of the town, but the soul, I mean, want to just talk about the soul of the town, but the soul needs financing. We can't have rundown buildings if we don't have financing.
You have one minute, sir.
And when Colorado introduced recreational marijuana, it was done in steps where it was medical first and then recreational, and they said that they estimated a increase in their tax revenue of about $300 million, and it ended up being three times that. I think throwing away the source of money to revitalize our town is a big mistake. It's something that's going to bring jobs, it's something that's going to bring revenue, and-
30 seconds, sir.
-something that's going to be able to be used to revitalize our streets, our empty buildings, and bring more life to this town so that it can have a soul that isn't in a crumbling body. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Elvis Goodwin Street, Bridgewater. I'm a 40-year resident, lived here my entire life, and I'd first like to say that I am displeased that the town put stop signs here at the Rotary.
That's also part of citizens' comment. We don't just have to talk about marijuana.
Changing it up a little bit. Also, I do not use medicinal marijuana, and I very rarely use recreational marijuana, but I do use it to help me get to sleep after a long work week. There is no scientific study that shows a toxic level of marijuana, so there's really no ill effect, other than, you know, the dizzy eyes that people get when they smoke. My son, I just visited him out in Colorado recently. His town outlawed recreational sales, but within his town of Greeley, there was a smaller town that had set its side, it set itself apart back in the early 1900s. They allowed it. That tiny town within the town is, has money hand over fist in building that little area phenomenally as the bigger Greeley is wasting away and being taken over by Big Pharma. That's it. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Stop, anybody? Yes. Do you identify yourself for the record?
Taylor Sullivan, 250 Norland Park. Had a nice little speech written, but first off, I'm a little confused by some of the speakers. For clarification, we have medical marijuana here. This isn't about medical marijuana. Second of all, I'm a little confused how we're going to revitalize a town by selling drugs and having our children get a hold of it. So we're not going to revitalize the town by that. So first off, I want to thank the residents of Bridgewater that support this retail marijuana ban, including a ban on cultivation, for coming out tonight. These are the people you want in your town. I also want to thank members of the group I belong to, Bridgewater Cares. You all have worked tirelessly with no pay to try and advocate that those will be affected by the retail sale of marijuana the most, our youth. And unfortunately, these young people do not have a voice, so we have to be their voice. Many of you have become great friends of mine, and I'm a proud- Many of you have become great friends of mine and I'm proud to be part of this group. Please know that no matter what happens tonight, we are on the right side of this issue. I would also like to thank our town council for all of the work that they have put into this, whether it be through research or coming here every other week. And I wanted to start out by reminding everybody again, because there's a lot of talk, exactly what we're talking about. We're talking about a hallucinogenic drug people use recreationally to get high. So that's what we're talking about. All these people keep coming up here talking about medical marijuana. Why don't they talk about how high they get and that they go in the car and drive? I don't know why we're still talking about medical. Recreational to get high, nothing else. It has been the beginning of the end for so many addicts, so why would we want it being sold in our town? Why would we allow Theory and ACF to cultivate recreational marijuana and sell to neighboring towns such as Brockton? If we care about our children, we should care about their children.
You have one minute, ma'am.
When I was out doing some last-minute Christmas shopping, I came across a man who asked me to sign a letter to keep Theory and ACS in business. I asked him, why would I need to sign a letter to keep a company in business? He said they're trying to cultivate medical marijuana. We all know this is not true. This is just an example of the lies and tactics these two companies are willing to use to make money off the misery of the addicted, whether it's being sold here in Bridgewater or being cultivated and sold to the next town over. The town...
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
Okay. The town council will be asking themselves tonight, do we want Bridgewater to be a town that pushes drugs on its children, or do we want Bridgewater to deal drugs to neighboring towns? I think the answer for all of you should be very clear. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Hi, my name is Elcin de Moore. It's A-L-C-I-N-D-A. I live at 9 Meadow Lane. I'm a registered nurse, been a nurse for over 40 years, and just recently moved to this town originally from Avon, Brockton. I have pretty much for over 40 years smoked pot, initially as recreational and now as medical. You have pot in your town. You're not going to keep it out whether you sell it or not. You sell drugs in your town. Whether you sell pot or not, you still sell drugs. You sell alcohol, you sell coffee, you sell cigarettes. There are all kinds of drugs that are for sale in this town, and pot is pretty much the easiest one out there. You do not get addicted to pot. You do not overdose from pot.
If you could address your comments to the council.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You do not get, you do not, most people anyway, do not get into a rage and go and beat up people or cause mayhem when they're on pot. They generally sit around and eat more than anything. Making it not legal in this town, I don't agree with, but if that's the way you go, you are throwing away revenue and you are not going to stop your citizens whether they are using it for medical reasons or recreational reasons. You're not going to stop them. And I also would say too, that I can pretty much say that just about every adult that I know that uses marijuana would be adamant that they do not want it for children, anybody under the age of 21. Once you're at 21, you're an adult, you should be able to make that choice, and you shouldn't have to be going to another town in order to buy what you choose to use. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
I'm Michelle Pore from Crepo Street. I am, I'm just not going to beat a dead horse and I'm going to be along with her as she said about alcohol and I am an adamant fan about people being allowed to drive around drunk and drink, and there's a lot of liquor stones in this, liquor stores in this town, and people that's, like she said, smoke weed, yes, whether it's recreational or not, it's still, people are going to do it. I've lost too many friends from drugs and alcohol, and they weren't, it wasn't from smoking marijuana. And I'm not opposed to it because the diversity of people that smoke marijuana, it could be a person sitting next to you and you don't even know, and it could be a little lady innocently that does it for her own, not for medical reasons, but because she wants to, just like you go home and have a drink. So in my defense, I would rather have that optional for people so they don't go out and buy stuff on the streets and it's, you know, legitimized by other companies and it's, you know, you know what you're getting instead of going to a dealer or something along those lines. But I, like I said, so many people I know, especially like me living in this town, I've lost a lot of people to addictions, and it's from drugs, mostly drugs, and alcohol. Alcohol takes you out slower. But I, I think it's almost the equivalent of a liquor store, so that's why I'm not opposed to it, and I just wanted to state my case, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I just take a pause for one second here? We've been at this for about 50 minutes. I appreciate everybody coming here and I'm not going to cut anybody off, but I would ask that everybody who has something to say, please add something different other than Bridgewater's a great town, we don't need marijuana, we don't need the retail, we don't want to sell it to other folks, or medical marijuana is important, I'm concerned about the business that I go to being able to stay in business. I've heard that, I believe the council has heard that. Have we heard all that? Have I missed anything? And just looking around. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna ask for new information and not anecdotal stories, but information that will help the council come to a decision tonight. With that said, ma'am, go ahead.
I have something new. Liz Casey, Hayward Street in Bridgewater. And I just have two concerns. However you feel about the issue, it's legal. We voted on November 8th of last year, it passed. However you feel about that, this is a legal industry now. So my two concerns about the ban, and I understand the opt-out on retail, absolutely, you don't want shops, I understand it, but a business that you've already allowed to grow and to invest in the town and to turn around and tell them that they cannot trade or have commerce outside of the town, seems to me it would have a chilling effect on businesses that may want to come into town with a business that may politically or culturally at some future point be unpopular. If I have a business that 10 years from now, everybody's going to be against, Bridgewater is setting the precedent that yes, we will bend to that, and that concerns me. This is a legal business now, whether you like it or not, this is passed. It's legal. Recreational marijuana is legal in the state. We don't want it in Bridgewater, we don't want it sold in stores in Bridgewater, that's fine, but a business that's already committed to the town and has been welcomed into the town, you're telling them, we're going to prohibit you from having trade anywhere else in the state, and that seems to me to be chilling. The other hard cold fact is that there's a lot of revenue that the town is not going to be partaking in, and those are my two points. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, something new?
Yeah.
Or more of the same?
It's a couple of things new, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So my name's Julie, Julie Durigan.
Oh, thank you.
52 South Street, Bridgewater. First, I would just, I'd like to just state that my position is to amend this vote being put forth to ban marijuana because, well, I, first of all, I have several friends who use marijuana. One, I had cancer and completely got cured from using marijuana and only marijuana alone, nothing else, which was an amazing feat. Other people have been, I know I have diabetes, use it for that. So aside from the medicinal uses, by allowing recreational sales, everybody can walk in, buy CBD and learn about the health benefits. Anyone who is voting to ban this, I would highly suggest to really become a bit more educated on marijuana in general, the history of marijuana, and all the health benefits as well. There's just, the list goes on and on about how it can help people, and there are many cases, people know in testimonials that people have heard of themselves in this very room. And, you know, like one documentary called The Union would be a great one to check out, like it states like that, you know, there's never been one only marijuana-smoking person case that someone has died from marijuana ever. The number one cause of death in America is cigarettes, the number two is alcohol. Instead of, instead of...
You have one minute, ma'am.
Having to take all the pills with all the side effects, CBD, whether it's, I mean, whether it's THC or CBD, it's still beneficial for you, but CBD is really amazing. I would suggest anyone who's in this room that's never tried it before to just try yourself and you'll probably feel some aches and pains go away.
Okay, thank you.
And certainly, some people here are not interested to get a medical marijuana card for medical use, but it, having Theory here makes it easier for all of you to be able to try the transformational healing that really happens when you take CBD specifically. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Further discussion? Anyone have something to add?
Excuse me. I have a favor for you.
Yes, ma'am, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Kathleen Brunacini, 70, Brookstone Drive, Bridgewater. Contrary to what I've heard, I have seen people die smoking marijuana. I had a friend whose son jumped off the Tobin Bridge high on marijuana. Her brain was fried from marijuana and her kids were selling it to other kids. So there you go. What happens when my kid or grandchild, because as you can see, I don't have kids at age...
Don't look a day over 39, ma'am.
Thank you. When my grandchildren go up to the pot shop and say to an older fellow, go in and buy me some, you know the story. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Victor Del Monte, 37, Fieldstone Circle. Again, we're not against medical marijuana. I think it has plenty of uses. We're not here to put the medical marijuana facilities out of business. We don't want them to lose their jobs. They're a legitimate business. They got a license to sell medical marijuana, that's all, medical marijuana, not recreational marijuana. 9,000-plus students at Bridgewater State University. I just heard a speech from President Clark today saying that Bridgewater State University is bucking the trend. They're increasing enrollment this year. Over a lot of the universities in Massachusetts, the enrollment has gone down. We have drug and alcohol problems at the university. Do we want to introduce more problems into the university? Do we want to make it easier for the kids to get a hold of this stuff? Again, medical is okay, recreational is not okay. You here heard a woman from Milford speak about, give you some statistics on the use of marijuana and how many kids from the age of 11 and below were using marijuana, which shocked me. And she pointed out that many studies have shown, government studies have shown, that the use of marijuana by children of those ages is detrimental on the development of the brain. I respectfully suggest that perhaps some of the people that are pushing this marijuana, recreational marijuana issue, may have started very young. In addition to that, medical marijuana, again, serves a purpose. Recreational marijuana serves no purpose other than to enrich...
You have one minute, sir.
People who live out of town. I urge you to ban the use of recreational marijuana in Bridgewater. We voted not to legalize medical marijuana, marijuana at all last year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to say the last few comments have been pretty repetitive from what I believe the council has heard. Does the council disagree? So I'm certainly open to hearing more. New, new information? Yep. We need new information though, ma'am. Thank you.
Sure. So it's Amy Sumner, Old Cedar Village. You've seen me speak many times, so I will skip the repetitive information. I guess what I wanted to offer is sort of a response to some of the issues that were discussed with the council at the last meeting. Coming into tonight, I saw the biggest issue as the amendment that was changed at the last meeting in terms of whether or not we would allow cultivation for recreational use or whether to ban that altogether with a clean ban of any recreational marijuana. So I sort of thought through some of the concerns that I heard, and coming from a business background, I'll go out on a limb and say that not everyone here is a CPA, so maybe that's something new that I can offer, is the business perspective on it. You know, I expected to hear people come up here and say, the town will lose a lot of revenue if we forego this opportunity to sell to other towns. And the estimates that I've heard in terms of revenue that we would really generate from that practice is a few hundred thousand dollars a year, which looking at the annual town financials is less than a fraction of a percent of total revenue that the town generates in a given year. You know, I also heard the argument that when recreational shops open, it could take away from the medical business. And from, you know, the research that I regrettably had to do, looking at marijuana blogs, the consensus seems to be out there that, you know, the, the demand for recreational marijuana will far exceed the supply. So law of supply and demand, when a consumer cannot get the product they really want, they'll look for a substitute. So if recreational marijuana isn't available, they'll continue to purchase the medical marijuana that is already available to them. So if the thought is out there that it's going to eat into that business, I just don't really see that happening. And I guess just the final thought that I'll offer, and I'm not condoning, I'm not condoning anyone losing their jobs, but as a former auditor who has looked at pharmaceutical companies, an inherent risk when you work for or do business in an environment that's heavily regulated is that sometimes changes in regulations or in the law can have a negative impact on your business. So if a facility opened under a medical license with the thought that they could then get into the recreational marketplace...
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
Sure. It's, you know, that's a risk. The Massachusetts Legislature in July passed a law allowing towns to prohibit that, and that's where we're at. So I'll wrap it up. I'm done.
Thank you. For the discussion, anyone from Bridgewater who's going to add something new? Please add something new.
Yeah. My name's Hannah Littlefield. I live on Auburn Street in Bridgewater. I have lived here for the last five years after I graduated college in New Hampshire and chose to move to Bridgewater and make it my home. I'm also employed by Theory Wellness, and I have been for the last six months as a patient treatment advisor. While I understand that the use of recreational marijuana is controversial, the cultivation of recreational cannabis products is a completely separate matter. I believe that allowing the cultivation of adult cannabis won't negatively affect the town. We're already cultivating medical and essentially our surplus would become the recreational. Being employed and well compensated by Theory Wellness allows me to continue living in this area despite the increasingly high costs. You know, I've only been out of college for a couple of years. I have loans and it's hard to find a job, and Theory Wellness has allowed me a very well-paying job that I enjoy very much. If Theory Wellness, you know, cannot cultivate adult cannabis use, I do risk losing my job, you know, unfortunately, because there will be increasing pressure from the recreational market. Patients aren't going to want to go and pay the $200 fee to the doctor and the $50 fee to the state year and year again when they could just go to a recreational shop. Theory was invited to our town and has done a tremendous job creating a safe and enjoyable working environment. I think that, you know, turning your backs on a new business that's in good standing with the town would be a, like a devastating precedent for other businesses coming in the town. And, I mean, living here for the last five years and spending time here previously when I was in high school, I've seen a lot of businesses come and go. You know, mom and pop shops closed down, and it would be really unfortunate that, you know, if they looked at how we handled this matter and didn't want to come here because of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to take another little pause. We're going to take another little pause, and I'm going to restate what I've heard, and now we're up to a... And now, we're up to an hour talking about this. And we can go all night. But I'm not going to allow, in order, any comments that reflect any of the following, any of the following points, okay? If you are for, if you are for a full ban, the town of Bridgewater doesn't need it. The town of Bridgewater voted against it. The town of Bridgewater owes that duty to their children. The town of Bridgewater is not going to lose a lot of money. The medical marijuana establishments came in knowing the game. The marijuana is a gateway drug to other drugs, okay? We've got all that. I've heard all that several times tonight, okay? Now, if we're for either retail shops or cultivating and selling out of the town to other retailers, we need to keep jobs. We need to increase revenue. The medical business is great for people who are sick and require assistance. I think I've covered everything I've heard multiple times tonight. So, ma'am, if you have something other than that to add, I appreciate that. My gavel's ready. Yes, ma'am.
I've been here a long time, so hopefully you can respect that. Obviously, I do have...
Could you identify yourself for the record?
It's Jennifer Smith, Boxwood Lane, 225. I just want to thank a few people. I want to thank the members of Bridgewater Cares. Thank you for your tireless efforts. This has not been easy. I know we've been up here since August. You are the definition of what it means to have heart. I want to thank all the residents of Bridgewater here tonight.
Okay, we can move through the thanks, please. Thank you.
I want to thank Frank and Dennis for supporting this ordinance. I want you to thank you for understanding that leaders do their best work when they are helping the greater good. Finally, as a counselor, you are expected to demonstrate the highest ethical standards. That shall be in compliance with all state and federal laws. You are expected to act as agents of the public and hold offices for the benefit of the public. And that the public interest is your primary concern as stated on page four of the Bridgewater Home Rule Charter, Section 1.8. So, I'll make this quick. I sincerely hope that we have six champions in this room who will save Bridgewater tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for bringing a new point to the discussion about our charter. That's very much appreciated by me. Other residents of the town who would like to come up and add a new comment? Father? Could you identify yourself for the record?
Sure. Father Bill Devine, 103...
I'm not afraid to use the gavel on the priest.
It won't strike you down. No, I respect you. It's been a long night. I respect all the cuts, ma'am. And most of what I was going to say, you told me I couldn't say it, so I'm going to...
Perfect.
All right. I'm just going to cut to the chase.
Thank you.
My big concern is tonight that the council here may have deliberately, maybe confused enough to say, rather than devote it to a total ban, let's consider a moratorium or a general election. That's my concern, is that they'll default to that. And I've spoken both about why we don't want those, the moratorium, and I can elaborate. But is that a question I have? Is that an option that the council could go to?
Usually, we don't engage in discussion during citizens' comments. But there is something on the agenda that could come up. It depends on the disposition of the action we have to take. Which hopefully, we get to before 10:30. Because if we don't, I don't believe the council's appetite will be to continue past 10:30.
Okay. But just if that's the case, if that might be an option, I would just ask that, and I know a concern I heard expressed at one of the first meetings here, was that if a councilman came, a councilwoman represented a precinct that voted for marijuana, they'd be concerned, they want to support that. Well, my response to that is when you have an election, that there's always a precinct or a group that's going to lose. And you go by the majority. And I think the majority has spoken. So, I specifically say that to those councilpersons that may be representing that.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Roger Homer, 75, Boxwood Lane. I'll keep it mercifully short.
Thank you.
I've heard several people argue here today that...
We've all heard what they argue, so just get your... Sir, thank you.
They say that marijuana is on the street anyway. It's not being controlled, so if we...
We have heard that, yes, sir. Could you get your point?
Okay. I get to the point that you can buy it legally if it's in town, if you're over 21. Anyone under 21 still has to buy it illegally anyway. There you go.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Continuing on, other residents from the town? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Carol Breszani, 25, Winwood Circle.
Ms. Breszani.
My comments are on research and looking up your information. I've heard many points of view tonight for and against recreational pot shops. As I tell my kids, don't just swallow what people tell you. People will try and make you believe all kinds of baloney. Do your own homework, do your own research. So, to the people that believe in information for you and for us that quote marijuana doesn't kill you, marijuana isn't a gateway drug. It's in our community anyways.
Ms. Breszani, we've had four months to do all the research. And I believe all the councils have.
I say, look up the New York Times, the New York Times article, July 25, 2015.
I need you to get to a point other than do research.
Right, there's research that we can all look up.
The council has done that. We've been here for four months. We've done research, all eight of us, I'm sure. Could you move on, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Study finding sharp increase in marijuana exposure among Colorado children. Or the article by John Ingled from the Denver Post, July 2016.
If we're not going to get to a new point, I'm going to have to rule you out of order, ma'am. Can you get to a new point?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. But we're hearing the same things over and over again. We've heard research for about four months. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone from Bridgewater? Yes, sir.
Jeff Hayward, 79, Grange Park.
Okay.
I haven't heard anybody mention all the vape shops that opened up in town. And one of the things that I've noticed is that they're selling to underage kids. They've got lots of different flavors. The kids seem to like it. I don't know many 30, 40, and 50-year-olds that are vaping. So, all I say is that if we bring in and legalize pot for recreational usage, kids are going to get it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for making a new point. I appreciate that. Anyone else from Bridgewater?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Columbotes.
I'd like to make a point that we've had, we've met here, I don't know, at least four or five times, talking about marijuana. And I'm concerned that you're enforcing this rule about repetitiveness only now that people who are in support of marijuana are speaking. So, I think in the very least...
I believe, I believe, I repeated everything I heard. And as long as I hear a new point from either side, I will take that, Mr. Columbotes. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Oh, sorry.
You identify yourself for the record.
My name is Angie Fernandez. I live on Meadow Lane, Waterford Village. I live on Meadow Lane here in Bridgewater, and I have been working for Theory for six months. I work in the processing department back at the house. I was very concerned to know that the town council will be voting to ban cultivation and processing of adult use of cannabis. I understand that some town members don't want cannabis shops in Bridgewater, but cultivation and processing won't have any negative impact on Bridgewater. I've heard that the making retail shop legal...
Heard it, then we've heard it, ma'am. You need to move to your new point, please.
Would be easy access to children, which I would like to dispute because as easy access that the retail shop may be is as easy as access as those opioid pills in your medicine cabinet, the same thing as your alcohol in your little bar in your basement or underneath your bed, wherever it is that you keep your favorite thing to keep the edge off. Your kids have access to it already. So, the concern for retail being easy accessible to kids is silly. You have all these items in your home.
We understand that, ma'am. Can you keep going?
Good night.
Thank you. We need to, we need to keep, we need to keep our emotions down. I would say that if I cut off the wife of a sergeant of the Bridgewater Police Force... I know it doesn't. Thank you. But I, and it was in favor of a ban. I'm trying to be fair both ways to try to get through this meeting. We're now at an hour and 10 minutes. Next up, anyone from Bridgewater want to add a new point? Any new points? Yes, sir. For or against, doesn't matter.
Vernon Domingo, 36, Saddle Drive, Bridgewater. Just a new point. Whatever the council votes, bear in mind, there will be political repercussions when the next vote comes through. And that's really important for you to consider.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being brief and making a, making a new point. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other folks from Bridgewater? Now, what I'm going to do, what I'm going to do now is ask that if there's anyone from out of town who likes to speak, if the town council would like to hear them. And then, after that, I'm going to allow two more residents, pro and against, to come up and speak about that, okay? So, is there anyone from out of town who would like to speak? Come up to address the council at the microphone and see if the council will vote to listen to you. And again, be brief if you are.
My name's Stephen Werther. I live at 120 Gilson Road in Situate, the CEO of Alternative Compassion Services.
Is there a motion to allow this gentleman to speak?
So moved.
Seconded.
By Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Any discussion, Mr. George? Mr. Wood?
Excuse me.
Mr. George, I'm sorry.
I would like to make just a statement, too. I'm very much in favor, as I've said multiple times, of business owners in Bridgewater that do not live in Bridgewater have the ability to speak in front of the council. I will stay true to that. I do not see myself moving in any other direction to expand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
I'll just add to that. Most business owners that partake in business in Bridgewater become part of the community whether they live here or not. So, I'm in favor of outsiders speaking.
Any other discussion about allowing this gentleman to speak? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Yes, sir, you've got a couple of minutes here.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. And thank you for that point. There are a lot of Bridgewater business owners that don't live in Bridgewater. But I am a father of three and an entrepreneur with years of small business experience. My Bridgewater journey started five years ago when I approached the town about locating a medical marijuana dispensary here. At that time, the town was already preparing for the scenario and zoning for dispensaries was about to be approved. There was no lobbying or arguing involved, as Bridgewater Cares has claimed. And I found the town to be very welcoming and business-friendly. My vision was to be a good neighbor and partner with the town. I wanted to offer high-quality medical marijuana and services to patients and also offer education around substance abuse prevention to children and adults. At that time, there was a program called Pilot, which was how the town would be compensated for us being in town. And at that time, I had offered to pay the town to hire a drug and alcohol counselor. Now, there's a more politically correct host agreement in place, and that's where the town gets their money from. I respect Bridgewater Cares' feelings regarding retail shops within the town. But the state of mass as a whole voted in favor of recreational marijuana, and I take issue with anyone trying to restrict my business outside of this town. I was welcomed to Bridgewater, have worked hard, spent millions of dollars, will provide many jobs and significant revenue to the town. I will be operating quietly on Elm Street and will not affect the town except in gained revenue. Over the last week, I personally have met many Bridgewater residents who support this business, are happy to see revenue and jobs come to the town, and believe that I do, that a ban on cultivation is overreach. I urge the town council to amend the language, ordinance DFY 18-005, to permit our medical marijuana dispensary cultivation, production, and testing of recreational marijuana.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from out of town who owns a business in the town who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Could you identify yourself for the record?
Yes. My name is Brandon Pollak with Theory Wellness at 1050 Elm Street in Bridgewater.
Thank you. Is there a motion to let Mr. Pollak speak?
So moved. Seconded.
Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Mr. George, discussion. Mr. Wood?
None.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Pollak.
Thank you. So, zoning ordinance DFY 18-005 is titled, "Banning the Retail Sale of Recreational Marijuana." Now, it contains amended language that bans not just retail sales, but also cultivation. This would prohibit our company, Theory Wellness, from selling a portion of the products we already produce in the wholesale recreational market. When the new market launches in July, it will erode the existing medical marijuana market that we currently participate in. This has happened in every other state that's undergone this change. Consider the data. In Massachusetts now has 42,000 patients in their program, 42,000. In Colorado, which legalized recreational cannabis and launched that program in 2014, there's 20,000 less patients now in that program. In Oregon, in the first 18 months, they lost 15,000 patients. Washington has no medical marijuana. That program does not exist now. Theory is currently the number-one rated dispensary in the entire state. This is the type of business Bridgewater should be proud of, not try to regulate out of existence. It is important to underscore it. There is no difference between medical and recreational marijuana. It is the same plant. It is cultivated the exact same way. By allowing us to cultivate cannabis for the recreational marketplace, the town would benefit through increased employment and through increased payments through our host agreement with no additional impact. There are over 100 cultivation facilities either operating already in Massachusetts or under construction. No other town has restricted them in the entire Commonwealth to just the medical market. This is a unique proposal for Bridgewater.
You have one minute, sir.
In the last seven days, we have collected 533 letters from Bridgewater residents who do not want the council to ban our cultivation opportunities in the future. They do not want to make us fire our employees and potentially shut down. We were welcomed in 2016, well before cannabis for adult use was even on the ballot. We and ACS have invested over $10 million in this community. We are at inflection point where our business needs to be able to pivot to continue to survive.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
We need flexibility to adapt. We are not asking for a retail business. We are asking the council to consider the facts, consider the lives of all of our employees at stake, and vote to amend the ordinance to allow us to cultivate for recreational market. That's all we're asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other business owners out of town? Business owners from out of town? Yes, sir. If you could identify yourself for the record.
I'm Nick Friedman. I'm CFO and co-founder of Theory Wellness.
Is there a motion to allow Mr. Friedman to speak?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. I'm assuming no discussion? No discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Yes, sir? And if you don't make your prior founders' points, that would be great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nick Friedman, CFO and co-founder of Theory Wellness. I started Theory Wellness to help my quadriplegic father with crippling nerve pain get off opiates. I am proud to know that I've been able to help him and thousands of other patients regain meaningful quality of life. What I dread is what this proposed ban on cultivation would force me to do. As CFO, I have an intimate understanding into our company's financials. As CFO, I have an intimate understanding into our company's financials. I understand how, in order to keep our lights on, we need to sell what our facility is built to produce. I understand how in every other state in which recreational cannabis was introduced, the medical market declined rapidly thereafter, forcing cultivators to shift production from medical to recreational. Most of all, I understand how this proposed ban on cultivation, which prevents us from adapting, would deliver a fatal blow to the solvency of our organization. The consequence of such would be disheartening. I would be forced to inform our staff, many here tonight, many of whom have children, that they no longer will have the income they need to provide for their families. These are high-skilled, high-paid manufacturing jobs, the type of jobs Bridgewater's economy cannot afford to lose. Worse still, I would be forced to close our doors to patients whose well-being, as I know firsthand, depends on the care that we provide. Therefore, in defense of my employees, my patients, my family, I would like to ask, what facts were considered? What study is done? What stakeholder engagement occurred to inform this last-minute addition of cultivation into the proposed ban? I would like to request that the council considers the following. What is the impact on jobs? Well, a hundred jobs would be lost and zero gained. How would this affect Bridgewater's revenue? Well, half a million in annual town revenue-
You have one minute, sir.
Would be lost and zero gained. Would there be an increased demand on town resources? No. Recreational cultivation is no different than medical. The fact is, there are serious negative consequences to this proposed ban that appears not to have been fully considered. And we are not alone here tonight. Just in the past seven days, we have received letters from over five hundred Bridgewater residents who oppose this ban on cultivation.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
We are not unreasonable people. We are not trying to open a retail store. We are here as human beings, good, genuine, hard-working people with lives at stake, asking to be heard. I urge the council to amend this ban and remove cultivation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other business owners out of town in the audience here who would like to speak? Yes, sir, are you from out of town?
Yes.
And you own a business?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Could you identify yourself for the record?
My name is Robert Saviano, and I own Saviano Electric Company. I'm on Elm Street as well. I moved my business here approximately three years ago.
Is there a motion to allow Mr. Saviano to speak?
So moved.
Maybe Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? Yes, sir? Continue.
I've been in the other room listening to everything and your patients.
Thank you for respecting our wishes.
I am a business owner, I don't live here. I do respect this town, I think you guys do a great job. I've seen, you know, working on Elm Street, I'm hearing everything from, kind of looking in from the box, and the only thing I can add is that I grew up in Needham, and as probably most people would say, always been a joke, we're the wettest dry town in the state, but Needham is a dry town. They don't sell alcohol, but we had a business there called Concentine. And Concentine was the distributor for Fall Staff and Shafer beer throughout Massachusetts. And it operated, you know, fine in our town, we got a lot of revenue from it. And when I hear that they don't want to sell it in the mom-and-pop type stores and they just want to cultivate it and sell it elsewhere, I think of it as like Concentine. I mean, we lived in a dry town and they distributed, you know, thousands of cases of beer every day without any effect on our town at all. And that's all I wanted to add for you guys.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other non-residents of the town who own a business in the town who would like to speak? Seeing none, let's have two folks who are pro and two folks who are anti come up, because I don't want to end with out-of-town folks speaking. I want to hear from the town of Bridgewater. So, you'll have a full three minutes, and I don't care what you say. Yes, ma'am?
Speak if you already spoke.
If there are new people? Yes, sir, are you gonna? Would you like to speak?
I'm getting in line if somebody's-
Okay. No? Yes, sir, go ahead. Identify yourself for the record, please.
William Scannell, sixty, Stony Brook Drive. You don't need to see my face. This is my son Emmett. He's a 2014 graduate of Bridgewater Regional High School. He started smoking marijuana when he was fourteen occasionally, and by the time he's sixteen, he was using it regularly. Because of the effects it had on his adolescent brain, he developed substance use disorder, more commonly and incorrectly called addiction. My son stopped using drugs through treatment, and he graduated high school with a four-point-two-seven GPA and got a full academic scholarship to college. But you see, even though he stopped using drugs, his brain was already damaged. He went off to college and like a lot of people in college with all the crazy partying, he started to drink and smoke pot again. And once he started to do that, when he uses alcohol and marijuana, and he didn't like to drink, so he used marijuana predominantly, he makes bad decisions. And he very quickly progressed to other harder drugs, which he didn't do in high school. He basically only smoked marijuana. Now, he's a brilliant kid, no question about it, but he fell prey to it. He quickly escalated, used cocaine, tried heroin, loved it, and he was dead on April twentieth, 2016, less than two years from graduating from high school. I have spoken in favor of Bridgewater Cares and opposing retail pot shops in this town, and after listening to everything tonight, the one thing I will say is no matter what you vote on tonight, you absolutely have to ban retail pot shops. They can, I think personally, you should ban it all, and they should be forced to try to bring it in a different way, because it seems like they just showed up tonight, you know, after offering free food and whatever in an army. I've been at all these hearings, I've never heard one person other than the last two business owners ever speak in favor of it. My final point is this, and it's similar to what that gentleman just said. You have the power, this is a zoning ordinance, you have the power to ban anything you want, just like Westwood and Needham and Sharon, the dry towns that don't allow alcohol.
One minute, sir.
You have the power to do that and to vote for that. But whatever you do, you absolutely have to ban retail pot shops, because not everyone that uses drugs will develop substance use disorder and die, but a large percentage of them will. They will develop problems and they will die. It is a gateway drug. And the final point is in Colorado, has the largest per capita use in the age of thirteen to twenty, which is under twenty-one. Not that they don't want to sell it to them, they don't.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
Okay, thank you. But again, you have the power to vote against that. Please do the right thing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone against, anyone against the ban want to speak? Against?
Against.
Okay, then we'll go with a four, and you'll get your full three minutes all the time.
I'm not-
Yes, sir. Identify yourself for the record.
Yep.
Hold on.
Oh, no, I mean for-
Against the ban? I'm against the ban.
You're against the ban.
So I'm for the pot shops.
Okay, yeah, that's what we wanted.
That's what we're calling a pot shop.
We wanted back and forth, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we tried to do. So, did you get the name, Em?
I'm Daniel Joseph of Five Bryan Road.
Hold on a second.
Hold on.
Andy, you all set? Are you all?
Yep.
Okay.
Daniel Joseph at Five Bryan Road, Bridgewater resident. You know, I agree with a lot on both sides. I understand what's going on. I guess I'm just going to use myself as a, I'm a lot like his son he just talked about. I have substance use disorder. I'm a patient currently transitioning into looking into theory, because they're the best-reviewed place and they're right and home. And I've been a patient of Vivitrol, Suboxone, you know, and I don't replace any drug use with marijuana now. You know, whether you're smoking it to get high recreationally, using it medicinally, whatever, we're all humans, we're going to do what we're going to do. You know, we're trying to be civil, we're trying to be together on what's being talked about here tonight. I, you know, I use meditation and other things to replace those areas of struggle. I medicate with marijuana as an anxiety, depression medication. Pain, I broke my back when I was fourteen years old. I'm short two vertebrae in my lower spine. Marijuana helps me with pain management every day of my life. I never clumped it in with heroin, which I'm prone to, alcohol, which I'm prone to. I have remained, you know, an ornament in this town known by, you know, making the papers for not-so-great things. But I've also contributed large to this town, working jobs all throughout Bridgewater since I was fourteen years old, twenty-six years old. It's more than half my life, or half my life almost, I have contributed to this town. I've always been a worker. And I'm not against anybody that doesn't want pot. You know, you don't want pot, you don't want your kids doing it, that's a domestic issue. We can keep that domestic. We left the kids at home tonight, you know, like, this is a-
You have one minute, sir.
This is an adult human issue. And, you know, I'm for both opinions, but I don't think we should tell anyone they can't do it recreationally either. We're here also with the confusion of cultivation and recreational. People keep saying medical, you know, it's all phrasing, it's all semantics, and it's a-
You have thirty seconds, sir.
You know, I think we should just consider that we all have a choice. We all have a choice in the matter. And people will make that choice, no matter if it's civil or if it's on record, off record. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone who is speaking for the ban from the town? Mrs. Brashani, you've got the full three minutes, and I won't interrupt you.
Thank you. I'm not actually going to take them up, I don't think. First of all, I just want to make it clear again, we are not trying to take away anything medicinal. It's a good thing, we want it there, we want people who need this help to have it. Regarding the comments that we've heard throughout the evening, marijuana doesn't kill you, marijuana isn't a gateway drug, it's in our community anyways, I think the best thing we can all do is, a lot of it is just opinions, you know, it's what I think, it's what you think, and a lot of it comes from just where we stand. You know, maybe I just like smoking, and so I'm going to look at all the opinions and listen to all the opinions that support where I'm coming from. If we take a look at Colorado, the state that's already been going through this, and we see the research and the articles and the studies that are coming out of that, we can learn from that state. And as I was going to mention, is a few of the articles that go against exactly what a lot of those points of view were. And if you get onto, you don't have to get onto Bridgewater Cares, although they have a lot of those links to those sites, but just get onto the internet, learn, learn for yourself, you know, don't just swallow what other people are telling you. I don't think we could end with anything better than what Attorney Scanlon was just finishing saying about his son, okay? Marijuana used recreationally can kill, okay? It does have an effect on our youth, okay? And another gentleman was mentioning five hundred signatures. Well, we have over eight hundred that we gathered over the summer of residents who do not want recreational marijuana in their town. And I think it's a very, very clear choice. You're either going to go with what the residents are asking you, or you're going to go with Theory and ACL. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. A person against the ban, is there any other resident from Bridgewater against the ban who would like to speak? Yes, sir, identify yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Henry Kunkel, I live at two six five Bridge Street in Bridgewater. I don't know, I don't think it's such, oh, public speaking. I don't know, the war on drugs has failed. We've watched it fail. I grew up here in Bridgewater, I went to BR, and like, everything was available in the bathroom. Like, and the stuff that I was seeing in the bathroom wasn't stuff that was, you know, regulated. It wasn't stuff that was, you know, grown responsibly. And so like, you know, kids get sick from that kind of stuff, kids die from that kind of stuff. And, you know, it's not okay to, like, you know, vilify it over and over and over again and then leave us with this, with shit and having to deal with like going to like a drug dealer.
You can control your language, sir, that would be appreciated.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Anyway, my point is just, like, it's in the hands of the town, it's in the hands of the government to control what is being allowed for our populace to touch. And I think that's safer than the person on the street that's cutting it with crack, you know? That's just my point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, I don't want to be accused of shutting anybody up, but I will ask, if anyone else wants to speak, feel free to step up. But if you say that if the first words out of your mouth is something we already heard, I'm going to hit the gavel and move on to the next person, okay? So, anybody else want to speak? Yes, ma'am? It's got to be new.
Hi.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Ayla Croft, and I am a business owner in Middleborough, but I would like to be a resident here. I found out, we were looking for-
Hold on. Is there a motion to let this woman speak?
I'm sorry, can you state who you are again, please?
I am Ayla Croft. I am a business owner in Middleborough, but I am a hopeful resident here in Bridgewater.
That's up to the council here. Is there a motion to allow this young woman to speak?
Can we clarify what type of business?
Is it men?
You want, my business, I'm a master photographer, I'm an award-winning published photographer for many publications. So I have a gallery on Center Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to allow this woman to speak? Seeing none, I'm sorry, ma'am. Moving on? Yes, ma'am? As long as you have a new point, as soon as you start going.
Rosemary Snichel on Hunter Street. I think it is new, and I'm not going to make a statement, I'm just going to ask maybe a rhetorical question, and it really, and they don't have to answer, but I've heard the businessmen who don't live here in Bridgewater, and they're telling us all the benefits that this type of industry would bring to our town. So my rhetorical question is, and I don't, it hasn't been asked, so it's new, have they approached their own town? What does Situate, does Situate have a ban? What, the man who said he's from Situate? So I'm wondering, why don't they approach their own town, and why have they come to us?
Thank you. Yes, sir? As long as it's a new point, sir, identify yourself for the record.
Kimber Brashani, twenty-five Winwood Circle. And I just want to say that people are mentioning this is not a, this is an adult conversation, it's not for the kids, it's all for the kids. Hopefully, adults would have enough self-control to know what they're doing, but kids, my friends, my brother, my sister, who I care about, and I hope they don't do this, would, might not, it's peer pressure. They might have a friend that might not have enough self-control for it, but they ended up doing it. And I hope that you'll make the right choice that we've all been voting for.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with a new point, either for or against? Yes, sir, coming up from the back. If you could just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Peter Sotera, thirty-one Fieldstone Circle. I live in Stone Meadow, where the old folks live. And from the old folks to Precinct Three and the members at large, we request that you vote against this. We do not want our grandchildren to have it, and we'd appreciate you to represent us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We've already heard that a lot of people want it, a lot of people don't. Yes, ma'am, new point, please. Identify yourself.
Aaron O'Leary of Gloria Drive. I think I just wanted to reiterate that if the gentleman-
If you're reiterating, you're out of order, next.
Phil Akins, Five Oak Meadow Place, I spoke earlier, but I want to rebut some of the things that have already been said from-
Have they all been, already been rebutted by other folks?
No.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
Okay, so, first of all, it says that it threatens the survival of the medical marijuana dispensaries. Theory Wellness broke ground in October of 2016 before the recreational marijuana bill passed. At that time, recreational marijuana could have been banned in the state completely. This begs the question, if recreational marijuana could have been banned statewide, why would a company break ground when the ban could have caused such hardship that they're afraid of? Okay? Yet two medical marijuana dispensaries continue to invest. They do not expect profit, do they not expect profit from the medical trade? The other thing that they've claimed, they've claimed that in every other state-
You've heard what they claim, sir.
Okay. Well, I need to say it to make the point, okay, to be able to rebut it. They said that the medical marijuana market declined and that the existing patients opt out of getting expensive yearly doctor certifications. This is misleading. In every other state, the medical marijuana avoids, in every other state, medical marijuana avoids the tax imposed on recreational marijuana. So Colorado doesn't charge a tax for medical marijuana. So that, this ensures that the need for true medical marijuana, what legalization of recreational medical marijuana does to the industry is to clean it up. If there is a legitimate need for medical marijuana, there would not be a need for a expensive yearly doctor certificate. It would be like any other prescription. The question, I question any need if it requires an expensive doctor's certification. And then there's the question of, there is no difference between medical and recreational marijuana. This is definitely not true. We heard about CDB, we heard about-
Okay, sir, we've allowed you to speak for about five or six minutes at this point, between your first time and your second time, so could you wrap up?
The FDA has not approved marijuana in a safe and effective grub for any indication. When medical marijuana proponents were trying to get medical marijuana approved, they explained how very different it is from recreational. And now they're claiming that there is no difference between them. Which is it? Is there a difference, or isn't there a difference?
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that rhetorical question, just like Mrs. Mitchell's. Thank you. Yes, next, anyone? New comment, please, new comment. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to refute what Brandon said, that no other town has banned recreational cultivation. That's actually a complete lie. In fact, Milford is the only town-
Can we not cast aspersions on other people in the room? Thank you.
Well, I'm just, you know, have the facts. Milford is actually the only town in the state that is now awaiting approval from the Attorney General for banning retail sales and allowing cultivation. Our neighbors in Rainham have already banned everything, as did Hanover yesterday, Westboro. There's, the list goes on and on, so that's extremely inaccurate.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others, folks? Yes, sir. Could you just identify yourself again, please, sir?
Michael Albido, 52 South Street, Bridgewater. New point for you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so I just wanted to come up here just to say, as we're talking about recreational use and the scares of this, um, that, you know, youth that I work with, they, that a lot of them are criminals who sell weed, and they go to my school because they got caught selling weed, okay? One actually, sadly, just got arrested for doing a very dumb thing, killing someone, allegedly, allegedly.
It's a little more than dumb.
Yeah, I know, believe me. Yeah. Now, crime, organized crime, is aided by not having the ability to, for recreational marijuana. And it's recreational marijuana's coming to Massachusetts. This comp, this company theory wants to grow it.
Okay, sir, we've, we've talked about that before. Thank you.
Yeah, no, right, but that...
Moving on, we'll move on to the next person. Thank you.
I just want to finish my point.
If you have another thought, you can, if you have another thought, you can get to the back of the line, as long as it's a new one. Thank you. Next person up, please.
Mr. President, can I make a point? We, I've been at the, on this council since the beginning, and we've spent many meeting nights staying after midnight to hear things much less important than this. I think we can take the time to hear everyone out.
All right, so we'll just hold up. I'll, I'll ask, is that a motion, Mr. Colm Bodis, to let everyone speak for the next...
It's not, it's a, I'm just imploring you...
For three minutes? Is that a motion, sir?
No, it is not a motion.
Well, what would you like, then?
I would like you to, to be, use your judgment.
All right, I'll make a motion that we allow anyone from, any resident from the town from now on to speak for their full allotted three minutes. Is there a second? No matter what they say. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right.
Let them talk.
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
That's, that's what Mr. Colm Bodis, I heard, wanted. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
It's discussion. I don't think there's anything in our rules about not letting people that come up during council, citizens' comments to not, not comment. Obviously, if they're, if they're rhetorical, or not rhetorical, if they're, if they're repeating themselves, then, then that's, that should, that can be cut off, but, um, we've heard a lot of, let's ban everything, but not so much from the other side. So I would like to hear some more comments that are a little more balanced.
All right, so all those in favor of allowing anyone here tonight to speak for their full three minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Posed.
It seems like it's, I heard, six to two. All right, so we will. All right, so we're here, we're here forever.
Some more than once, because you're not being quick.
No, you, you've got, you've got, we have citizens' com...
First of all, citizens...
No.
Quite ridiculous.
Excuse me, sir, you're out of order. Next, please.
Can I finish with my time?
Yes, you've got another full three minutes, actually.
Oh, well, well, all I, I won't even yield, I will yield some of my time back, because all I wanted to say is that, you know, organized crime is out there, and they benefit, um, because people who want to get it, you have to go through them to get it. And it takes a big hit, and it's, this is true, that you can, I'm sure you've seen the statistics, that organized crime's hurt by the legalization of marijuana. And it is true that kids that are getting it, that's made on the streets, that stuff is not, it's, it's, it can, you never know what you're getting. It's not regulated, it's a deregulated market. There's, aside from chemicals and toxins in it, this, they do all kinds of things to make it smell a certain way, spray chemicals on it. It's awful, it's disgusting. The role, just to talk for a moment about, as a citizen, the role of government, I mean, if, if kids are having a problem with substance abuse as a community, let's have some more youth programs. Let's do some good things with them, you know? Let's support them in other ways, you know? Um, it, I just, it, it does really matter, um, this whole thing, because you heard the statistics about other medical dispensaries and what's happening in the medical industry around the country, okay? And I will reiterate about how CBD is amazing, and everyone should try it, because it's not psychoactive. I mean, you try all these things from pharmaceutical companies, why won't you try something that nature provides, and it's really good for you? Like the Charlotte Web strand that they do in Colorado?
You have one minute, sir.
That's literally helped a young girl, they, who named it after, she used to have 700 seizures a week, and she went down to zero after taking it. So, the opportunity for you to try it and to stop, to help, it's not gonna fully stop, but to, to take a big bite out of crime, as they used to say.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. And I just really hope Bridgewater can move in that direction of not vilifying something without knowing, and going with the science of what really, how it, how it affects people. And no, it's not bad. Try it, you know, try CBD. Put down the pharmaceuticals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next. Yes, ma'am. You've got three minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to express that I'm fearful that some people seem to be laboring under the delusion that keeping or banning the retail sale of recreational marijuana will keep the children safe, or keep the streets safe, when, in fact, it might be the only way to fully ensure their safety, seeing that it is regulated and taxed. Um, just want to say that.
Thank you. Next. Yes, ma'am, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just gonna say what I forgot to say before. I, I'm not naive that people use it, gonna use it. I wish they didn't. Legal or not, they're gonna use it. I just don't want to have Bridgewater support the use of it, and that's what happened. And, and I'm, I get upset when people dangle the mighty golden dollar. We're gonna lose money, we're gonna lose money. At what price do we put on this town for a business that could potentially hurt people? And it does, there's no, we've had policemen talk before, you've got the other meetings. There are risks involved. Not everybody, same with alcohol. But, again, the town is not gonna fold because we don't allow recreational marijuana, we're not anti-business, we just, there are things that you just need to consider, and I just implore you again to put a ban on the retail of marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Anyone else like to speak? Others, you have opportunity to talk about other things, too, other things on the agenda, if you're from Easy Street. Against annual license renewals for something or other. Please feel free.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna talk about Easy Street, but, um...
Yes, if you could identify yourself for the record.
Sure, it's Amy Sumner, Old Cedar Village. I'll keep it very brief, but, um, there was a younger gentleman who stood up and mentioned that this is actually very much a kid issue. And I have a middle school-aged son who wanted to come tonight and voice his opinion, and I told him no, because I thought it might be a cheap shot to let a kid stand up here and lobby to the council, that he didn't want marijuana in our community. Um, as you know, I live off of Elm Street, and it may seem small-scale or petty to people in this room, but for the last eight or nine months, I've been answering questions to him that are very important, such as, if they start selling drugs in our town on top of what they already are, will you still let me ride my bike up Elm Street? Or will my friends not be allowed to come over my house anymore if they're selling drugs in our neighborhood? So as much as we talk about it being an adult issue, that adults need to control their kids, there are certain things beyond my control that, to him, are big and impact his daily life. So that's just one additional thing. Hopefully it's a new point to mention.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking against the ban? I'm trying to solicit people against the ban. Anyone else for the ban? Yes, ma'am. Could identify yourself for the record.
Angie Fernandez, Waterford Village. I want to say, as a 23-year-old, recently 23-year-old, I see both sides, I honestly do. My mother raised me, pot is bad, you know, marijuana is bad for you, it is a gateway drug. She told, she gave me the whole spiel, right? I, I completely understand. And then I did my own research, I did my own education, I did my own experimenting, right? Kids will experiment. I did that seven, I started around 16, 17 years old. Now, as a, in a parent's perspective, having done both, I would much rather my 17-year-old pick up a joint over a beer, because it is absolutely disturbing, the fact that you could go to a restaurant with your family, you have your kids right next to you, and you're gonna order beer and wine and whatever other alcohol, yet you're gonna put your nose up at people who are choosing to self-medicate on a natural plant that you can grow in your backyard. That just appalls me, because how many deaths have we had by alcohol already? And yet no one is even talking about, even proposing a ban on alcohol, because no, why not? I mean, if you're gonna talk about marijuana being bad, and the effects of marijuana being negative, why not propose the fact that alcohol is worse? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Oh, I thought you were stepping up. I'm sorry. Uh, other comments from the public, please? Anyone speaking for, anyone speaking, yes, ma'am?
I'm Audrey from Holden. I heard a lot of things tonight, and I was standing there, I got invited through Facebook. I didn't know this was happening. And, um, I decided to come to find out what's going on, and why the ban was, um, being, um, being proposed, and I heard everything in the room, and I think the elephant in the room is that people are fearing the fact that this is coming into their neighborhood to, um, cause their kids to have access to it. Sorry, I'm like nervous.
That's fine. We're all nice up here.
But, um, the thing is, there's a stigma with, um, the use of cannabis, and the thing is, it happened around 1930, when the FBI, one of the chief agents, decided to find a new, uh, type of, um, uh, target, um, to get funding for their office. So this became a problem, and that's how it started with the war on drugs. So they've made it so that it's ingrained in so many people's minds that this thing is really, really bad. But I want to remind everybody that our forefathers grew this stuff, and wrote the Declaration of Independence, and did a damn good, good job at it, I'm sorry. And they did a great job at it. So, um, for all those who had losses and, um, negative connotation to the fact that they're using, or their kids have used, and people have passed away or got addicted to other drugs, I apologize, I'm sorry, but we all are very different, and our bodies react differently to chemicals. And some people have mental instability that caused them...
You have one minute, ma'am.
...to go on to use other drugs. So this thing is really good. It's a God-given plant, and it's really good for the health of a lot of people. I have pain, um, also, back pain, knee pain, et cetera, and I tried the CBD oil, not too long ago, I used it twice, to tell you the truth, and I'm better for it. I don't like smoking, I don't smoke. I know people who smoke.
You have 30 seconds, ma'am.
But I think it would be really detrimental to like ban this for the town, when it can bring revenue also.
Thank you, ma'am. Next. Yes, sir.
I, I just can't sit down and...
You just identify yourself again.
I'm Evan Maris, Ledgew Drive. I can't sit down and have people talk about how I feel. I'm not fearful of a drug being infiltrated into my community. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is the reputation of our town. I'm concerned that if we allow to grow recreational and sell to other places and affect other people in other neighborhoods, what precedent does that set? What are we saying? Are we saying that it's okay for what, for us to grow here, to sell somewhere else? To, to talk about people, and we keep throwing the children in. Somebody made a point earlier that people are gonna buy it anyways. Well, people, I, I'm in col, well, I just graduated, I'm in college, I see what happens. Older kids go buy alcohol for younger kids, that's what's gonna happen. They have easier access to it, they're gonna buy for younger kids, you'll have more youth addicted, because you'll have easier access to a drug. It's as simple as that. As I said before, I'm a resident of this town, I grew up here, the best interest for our town, for our community, and for our reputation, and for our resale values, is to not have this stigma attached to Bridgewater's name. Go do it in your backyard, go do it in Situate, but we don't want it here. And I would hope, and I, I urge you to listen to the people of Bridgewater, and to please just ban this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone against, before you, Father, anyone against? I'm trying to be even-handed here. Anyone, anyone against the ban, please come up. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a direct rebuttal. As far as the reputation of Bridgewater goes, I encourage you all to vote in a way that the reputation of Bridgewater in time is gonna be proven, as this becomes not a Schedule I narcotic in this scientific testing, and people can know scientifically what people know who use it, um, that Bridgewater's gonna be a, a front-runner in, uh, you know, leading the way by, um, being, but, but by not stifling this industry. I just want to share with you that I have done my research on this, and New England Journal of Medicine actually talks about how this is the, this is the only known substance to help stimulate the growth of nervous tissue. So for example, my best friend's father had the shingles, and they wanted to do all kinds of things, including zap his spine, that could have possibly made him go, become paralyzed. Also give him lots of opioids that do nothing but numb the pain. Marijuana helps to regrow the neural sheath that causes, when that's not, not, then that's damaged, when you have the shingles, it causes misfirings. So like wind blowing would cause him pain, or a sheet on him or a shirt would cause him pain. So here you have a substance that's the only known substance that stimulates the growth of nervous tissue. That's science, you know? And alcohol kills brain cells, and we widely accept that as part of our culture. And we're concerned about marijuana. Science is a good thing, you know, and someday, hopefully...
You have one minute, sir.
...the federal government will reschedule marijuana like they were gonna do in August of 2016, but, under the Obama administration, but they kept it as Schedule I, which is ridiculous, saying it has no medical value. That's the world we're living in, the propagandized world, where pharmaceutical companies make trillions of dollars. Bridgewater's gonna be a front-runner in science and understanding of something that is good.
You have 30 seconds, sir.
The reputation of Bridgewater will be good. In the long term, it will be a benefit to have this vote be pro-helping in all ways the industry that is in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, someone who is for a ban, please, someone who's for a ban, please step up. Yes, ma'am, identify yourself for the record.
I want to thank all of you for all the work you do for Bridgewater. I just want to make one comment on what the gentleman before me said. Do we want to be a front-runner for a federal illegal drug? Is that what we want for Bridgewater? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone against? Do we have someone from out of town? Is that what you're saying? Are you in town?
I am in town.
And are you for or against the ban?
Against the ban.
Then you are up next, sir, because you're against the ban. Thank you. Just identify yourself for the record again.
Again, I'm Daniel Joseph of 5 Bryan Road. I'd like to reiterate real quick, just to make my point, that I have substance use disorder, but I'm a person, too. I don't stigmatize, maybe some people here stigmatize me for that. I don't stigmatize me for that. My family doesn't stigmatize me for that. I don't stigmatize people for whatever they believe to be true to them, whether it be physical, mental, whatever. We're a society built on human beings, and I think everything's becoming a little bit more, I don't know, mechanical on, on what's already written on paper. We're the people, change what's written on paper. We write things on paper. And that's, that's all I wanted to reiterate. I don't stigmatize anyone else from, for their beliefs.
Thank you, sir. I believe we have a woman from out of town who would like to speak? Is there anyone from in town who wants to speak in favor of a ban? In favor of a ban? Yes, Father?
And again, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of things that were said. Uh, one comment I did want to make is, I'm hoping that you, that you... Uh, one comment I did want to make is, I'm hoping, uh, that you, that the council members all have the courage, uh, when they make the vote, not just to base it on what you hear tonight, certainly consider tonight, but what I've heard over the past four months and what you've heard are community leaders, first responders, educators, business owners, doctors, clergy, homeowners, parents and grandparents, college students, lawyers, asking for the ban. You've heard it all. And I'm just asking you to consider all those that you've heard over the last couple months and not just focus on this night. And the last thing is, I think, um, again, I, I kind of reiterate that, um, the not, we don't want, and my hope is that you don't go to take the tactic and say, "Well, we need a mor-, we need to go for a moratorium or a, um, another election." I hope you don't go that way.
Thank you, Father. Uh, anyone speaking against the ban from town? Against the ban from town? From town? Yes, identify yourself for the record, please, ma'am.
I'm Laura McAlinden. I live on Plymouth Street in Bridgewater.
Thank you.
I'm looking at the agenda for today, and I see later on that there's gonna be license transactions, the annual license renewals. Those are for alcohol businesses. I don't understand the hypocrisy of encouraging the use of alcohol extensively with all of the businesses in this town. When you're considering banning marijuana, it doesn't make any sense to me, because both are wildly available legally and illegally, both for adults and for children. It makes more sense to me that we regulate what is being used. I've raised two teenagers, and you can hardly throw a rock without finding someone who uses or someone who sells. I would hope that you would take the action to help put out of business the illegal drug trade in this town. I think that if we were allowed to have retail shops, that it would put a significant dent in the illegal use and sale. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone in favor from the town? Anyone in favor of a ban from the town? Yes, sir.
Mr. President? Mr. President? I'd like to make-
I've already recognized him. I'll recognize you after that.
Anthony's on Frellie One Millstone Drive here in Bridgewater. There are just three very quick points. Number one, contrary to some of the statements that have been made, extensive studies have shown the harmful effects of marijuana on individuals. Number two, as far as the commercial aspects of it and the income, you will find that cities and towns that have earned favor of marijuana use have spent more money in dealing with the issues that resulted from marijuana use. And third, this town has spoken clearly that they want the ban against recreational use of marijuana. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Zunfreli. Mr. Wood will take a little break from citizens' comments. Mr. Wood, yes?
I was gonna make a motion that we hear, uh, two more comments and then move on to item G on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Wood, discussion?
Um, I, I'm hearing a lot of the similar comments. I think the council's been well-informed at this point. There's probably a couple of unique ones still left, and I'd like to hear those, but then we have a long agenda ahead of us.
Mr. Gallagher?
I agree with Councilor Wood. I think, um, we've heard from a lot of people and like to hear from a few more, but more importantly, I think that they want to hear from us and see what our position finally is.
Mr. Colomotus?
Um, the council has received a letter from Citizen today, um, who has MS, and she's on her way down, so I will be voting against that in order to give her a chance to speak.
I'm gonna support the position that the council originally took in allowing everybody to speak in public forum in support of Mr. Colomotus's. So, um, if you want to vote to cut off public forum, it's not gonna be while I vote for it. So with that, we'll have a roll call vote, Mrs., Mrs. Holmberg.
So, so just to clarify, that was to let-
Yeah, what are we voting on?
That was to let two more, two more speak.
Two more speakers, one pro, one against. That's the way I interpreted your motion.
That's what we're voting on?
One pro, one against.
Okay.
And then we're gonna cut off public forum.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus?
No.
Mr. George?
No.
Six in favor, two against.
Okay, I think we were on a, yeah. I, I'm sorry, I lost track of where we were. We just had a pro ban, so we would like an anti-ban. If anyone is against a ban, could you please come up to the microphone? Wait, wait one second, Miss Loesch. Nobody, everybody who is against a ban in this room right now, who is a resident of Bridgewater, has already spoken. Is that correct? Going once, going twice, going a third time? All right. Then anybody who is in favor of a ban, who has not yet spoken, because we've heard from several people already who have spoken once tonight, twice tonight, several times over the last few months, we, we know, understand your position. Is there anyone here who has yet to speak, who would like to speak in favor of a ban? Please step up. I'll ask one. Yes, ma'am. Almost lost.
Christine McMaster, 680 Vernon Street in Bridgewater. I'm really nervous, and I'm sitting here listening to all these stories, and, um, a little over 12 years ago, the founder of Learn to Cope, Joanne Peterson, uh, went to, uh, she spoke about warning about the epidemic, the coming epidemic of the opioid crisis. Um, the opioid crisis began with organized legal companies falsifying information. I just want everyone to be aware that, you know, what we're being told isn't necessarily what is true. Our kids are dying because we were given false information by legalized companies. It wasn't the sellers on the streets who started the crisis. So just beware.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other folks in town speaking against a ban? Any at all? Going once, going twice, going three times?
Excuse me, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I think a woman here didn't, didn't get your question.
Oh, yes, okay. Come up. You're speaking against a ban?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am. If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Um, my name is Donna Johnson, and I live on South Street.
Thank you.
I, I was not going to attend this evening because I wanted to protect, uh, my privacy. I am a resident. Uh, I'm disabled, and I have secondary progressive multiple sclerosis. Pardon me.
Take your time. We're not gonna enforce a three-minute ban here, just so you know.
I, um, I have a, I wrote a letter. You probably got it. Can I just read it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, I, uh, doing, coming here means giving up my privacy about my medical condition and my medical treatment, which is very difficult for me. As I require a cane and often a wheelchair, it's not a secret that I have a disability, but I did not want to, um, be the public face of MS or, uh, have my medications advertised. However, I've been watching from home, and I think it's important that, uh, someone from the disabled community come and speak. I would like the council to consider the two bans separately. The ban on recreational sales in town, or pot shops, as people have called them, and the ban on recreational, um, grow facilities. I have, I use medical marijuana for pain and for muscle, muscle spasticity, um, that's part of my disease. My doctors prefer that I use medical marijuana, as it's safer than opioid, and, uh, some of the side effects of the medications for nerve pain, uh, are becoming problematic. And spasticity, uh, I've reached the limit of what the medication I take can do for me there. I want to say that even if, uh, we are able to purchase marijuana in recreational shops, I would prefer to have, uh, the recommendation of my physician and go through the state certification process, and I would prefer to go to Theory Wellness in Bridgewater. I don't know if people have had an opportunity to visit, um, any of the other dispensaries in surrounding cities or towns. Uh, there is a, a difference. The first difference I noticed at Theory Wellness was in security. You have to show your identification and your medical marijuana card in order to be let into the building. And then when you enter the building, there's a pleasant vestibule with another person who, uh, checks your identification again and assists you before you even go into the facility. At, at the nearby facility in Brockton, it's, you get buzzed in, and they check your ID after you're buzzed in. They also, uh, Theory Wellness, on the day that they went, they had twice as many staff members, which meant that they had the time and patience to discuss with me the best, uh, choices I could make. I'm a novice. I don't know, uh, much about how it is that you ingest marijuana. I needed that kind of attention, and I would want to continue to have it. Um, they had, uh, twice as many people working, so they were able to give that to me in a professional manner. I would ask that you think of people who cannot be here to speak to you, because it's difficult, um, if you have issues that require medical marijuana, and consider separating the two issues. If cultivation of recreational marijuana is going to affect the cultivation of medical marijuana, then there's a whole community of people who need to be heard, and I, I think that the emotions run very high when we talk about recreational pot shops, and people have very valid concerns, that we're disproportionately affecting a community of people who, uh, are not always heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we'll hear anybody who is for a ban now. Yes, sir, for a ban, correct? Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Thank you. Um, anyone who's for a ban, please, from Bridgewater, for? Nope? If it's, if there's a new person, I'll favor them, but-
I just want to say, I agree with-
We're here till midnight, according to Mr. Colomotus.
I agree with what this last woman said. I, too, would like to see marijuana sold medicinally regulated in Bridgewater. Um, it's kind of sad, and I wonder why. I have to ask myself, I'm standing there, and I'm listening to her, and I'm like, why is this poor woman with MS, who obviously must have had quite a time getting here, coming here to talk about the fact that she fears marijuana is gonna be taken away from her medicinally? I'm wondering, how did that even become a thought in her head? Was that something that's been being spread around, like when people are getting signatures? Because we know that those people had misinformation. I mean, that's really sad that she had to come down here to state that point, when there is no fear of her losing her marijuana medicinally. So, again, like I said, yes, that's exactly how I would like marijuana to be sold in Bridgewater. I agree with-
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone speaking, uh, against a ban? Against a ban here? Any other folks? Yes, sir. Excuse me, excuse me, we're here to hear everybody.
I just wanna, I just wanna quick rebuttal to that, because as, this is how, as clear as it can be to play it out. Theory is really the best at what they do. I have no financial anything with them. I'm just a patient who goes and gets my stuff there, tried other places, they're the best at what they do. We should be proud to have them here. The whole point is this: as recreational shops open, as in other states, what's happened is it causes businesses like Theory, who would only be able to operate in the, in the medical, uh, area, to suffer. Not because, they're still awesome, they're still great, but if they suffer, because other people are just going other places, and the whole medical industry starts to get smaller and smaller, because who, who's gonna, you know, a lot of people who don't necessarily need it for medical reasons, and pay the $200 each, you know, year and so forth to renew their license and all the different fees and do all the different things, people aren't gonna do that. So that's the whole point. That woman's here, speaking to, I, I don't know why she is personally, but I, this is what inspired me from her share, that she's concerned that the medicine that she takes at a, um, an amazing place that provides it is in jeopardy, because as the future progresses and marijuana shops recreationally open up around the state of Massachusetts, she's concerned that Theory could go out of business, because they're not gonna be able to compete. That's it. So that's, that's the picture we're looking at here. And the data in other states who have legalized recreational marijuana shows that, as you have heard earlier this evening. And that's all, I just want to clarify that point, and thank you for your time. I do realize I've taken a lot of the mic time, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next, for a ban, for a ban. I, I don't hear anyone screaming that you shouldn't be up here, though. I've heard you come many times to the mic.
Evan Maris, Ledgewa Drive. I, I wish that my grandmother, who had arthritis, who started smoking cigarettes to deal with her pain, I wish there was a Theory Wellness where she could go get a medical card and go use a great facility. Like, I've, I haven't been there. I, I wish that maybe that would have prolonged her life, and she wouldn't have gotten cancer, and she would still be around with me today. She would have seen me graduate from college on Friday. But that's not what we're talking about. Theory Wellness got into the game in Bridgewater before. They knew the consequences. We're not here, the town, the government, isn't here to subsidize a business. The government is not here to tell a business, "If you don't make your, your first goal, you have something to fall back on, 'cause we'll back you up." That's not how it works. People go out of business, they know what they get into, they go start another venture. That's how America works. And we can't stand here and say that we're going to, because of all of these fear-mongering tactics, we're gonna subsidize a business, because they're saying they're gonna, they're gonna go belly up if the medical industry goes under. That's not why we're here. We're here because we want to protect our town, and they were here, and they came in and knew the risk. So that's it. Have a nice holiday.
Thank you, sir. Uh, anyone against the ban? Anyone against the ban want to come up and speak? Anyone against the ban? Anyone for the ban want to come up and speak again? Going once, going twice, going three times, and against and for? Going once, going twice, going three times, and against and for? Nobody else? All right. Moving on, any other, any other citizens open forum? As I said, we have other issues on the table. Any other? No? All right. Moving on, we have no appointments, we have no hearings, moving on to...
Mr. President?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to take item L.B. out of order.
We can take item L out of order, Mr. George.
L, excuse me.
I'll second that.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. George, discussion?
I think I can safely say the vast majority of people that are here want us to have this vote. Let's have this vote.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thanks.
Mr. Gallagher?
Oh, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, any other discussion on taking item L out of order? I'll be voting no, we should stay in regular order at this point in time. But all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Me, no. So it's six to two that we will take item L out of order. Therefore, moving on to item L, legislation for action. Ordinance DFY 18003, zoning ordinance, rezone lots on Easy Street to residential A.B. at their meeting held on 11/117. The Community Economic Development Committee held a duly advertised joint public hearing with the planning board. After closing the hearing, the discussion was continued to November 15, 2017. On November 15, the Community and Economic Development Committee voted to recommend to the town council that they adopt this measure with amendments. The planning board voted to recommend this ordinance with amendments. Additional amendments were adopted on December 5. This measure, as amended, has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website and therefore may be finally considered this evening as a motion to approve.
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. George, discussion?
Been discussed, been advertised, we haven't received anything to the contrary, so I'd like to move forward.
Mr. Haley?
Same.
Any further discussion from the council? Mr. Columbotes?
This zoning ordinance fixes a past mistake which, in which residences were built in an industrial zone, so it's, it's unfortunate that we have to do this. I would just hope that we don't make these sorts of mistakes in the future.
Any further discussion on 18003? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch? Eight in favor, none against.
All right. Moving on to ordinance DFY 18005, zoning ordinance prohibiting the retail sale of recreational marijuana. At their meeting held on November 1, 2017, the Community and Economic Development Committee held a duly advertised joint public hearing with the planning board. After closing the hearing, the discussion was continued to November 15, 2017. On November 15, the Community and Economic Development Committee voted to recommend the town council adopt this measure with amendments. The planning board voted to recommend this ordinance with amendments. This measure was duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website. On December 5, the measure was amended further and has been re-advertised and reposted on the website in its updated form and may be finally considered this evening. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I, I made a motion to approve.
Second, I'll second that.
All right. I have no discussion at the moment. Mr. Gallagher?
No, I'd like to see the council take a vote, and as written on this ordinance, we've been hearing from debate on this for two hours plus just tonight, plus all the other open comments, citizens' comments over the past few months. I understand all sides. And for, for me, as a councillor at large, the town voted no in November of 2016. I feel an obligation to vote for this ban, but additionally, I do support the ban and see that having recreational marijuana in the downtown Bridgewater, it's just not a good fit for our community. It's not a good fit at all. It's not about the money to me, it shouldn't be about the money to everybody. We will reap some financial benefits from the, the sale of recreational marijuana throughout the state, and we will see some revenue from medical marijuana as we currently do here in the town of Bridgewater. I understand the business model that Theory Wellness has and understand what they are willing to do going forward. And I hope, and I am sure, they will continue to be able to provide medical marijuana for those that, that need it. So I think it's time that the citizens hear how we feel. I feel we need a ban in Bridgewater, and that's how I will vote tonight.
Further discussion? Mr. Columbotes?
I too support a ban on the retail sale of marijuana. However, I do not support a ban on the cultivation of marijuana for retail market elsewhere in the state. I think Mrs. Johnson failed to read a couple of key paragraphs of her letter that she sent to the whole council today, so don't stand and read those. And she gets to the point of that the medical market will dry up in this state after the recreational sale is allowed in July. And so let me just read from her letter. "Now that recreational marijuana will be sold in Massachusetts, many patients will not want to bother with the multi-step process of being certified to use medical marijuana in our state. It involves being certified yearly by a doctor and obtaining a state-issued medical marijuana card every two years. If a patient requires the assistance of a family member in the dispensary, even just to push their wheelchair, that family member must register as a caregiver. All of these steps require separate fees. With the legalization and implementation of the sale of recreational marijuana, patients can save a considerable amount of money by skipping the medical certification altogether and purchasing marijuana from recreational shops. As businesses and other towns open, grow facilities will not be able to stay afloat if they can only provide product exclusively to medical dispensaries. The demand for their product will sink if they can only sell to the medical marijuana market." So that is the, the principal reason that I'm supporting an amendment which would re-insert the language exempting cultivators from this ban. And I passed out a, and it's, it's the language we took out a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Fitzgibbons amendment to take it out, and that is to re-insert the language, if I might read it, Mr. Fitzgibbons, to install, insert after the word, after the word "Bridgewater", with the exception of marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, and marijuana testing facilities, as also defined in general laws. I don't know what C stands for.
Chapter 94.
C 94G, section 1, this prohibition shall not apply to the sale, and that is, and I would retain the, the last clause that states that it would not apply to medical, to the cultivation for a medical market. So I'd like to make that amendment.
I'll second that amendment.
Second by Mr. Wood. Mr. Columbotes, further discussion on the amendment?
I think it's been said. I don't think there'll be any negative effects if we allow...
Just, just like everyone else, if you think it's been said, let Mr. Wood do it.
The benefits outweigh the costs.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Most people don't know that Bridgewater has a host agreement with the two facilities, and we are generating quite a bit of revenue, but that's not the reason for this amendment. The, the business case for what's been said by Mrs. Johnson and others is quite simple. And it's illustrated best by Washington State, which merged their, their medical and retail markets together. Because what happens in the open market is that there is no reason that retail can't offer what medical offers. And today in the state, prior to the 2016 vote, medical offered special, special, special brews, let's call it like alcohol, right? So I've met many people that have, are on, have medical cards, and they pay a couple hundred dollars, plus they pay, you know, doctor's fees to get that card for many, many, many different reasons. The market, once retail, retail stores opens up, the medical will dry up, as, as has been said. It's, it can be seen in California, it can be seen in Washington State, it will be seen here. Many of the cards today are for items that are not on the list of eight, but if you can get a prescription, then you can get a card. If you can get a card, you can get a medical dispensary. The World Health Organization last week announced that CBDs have absolutely no habitual effect and that they are effective. Our own CDC won't do that because, as many have stated, at federal level, it is still an, an item that's listed as, maybe as an narcotic, but it definitely is a drug. And so the, the testing is limited on that, that front, but WHO organization did look at CBDs. So one of the persons I spoke to had a mix of, of many CBDs and just a few THC compounds, and the compound was not in the form of a joint or a leaf or something else, it was in the form of a, of a, almost a solid that he took in a very small, small amount. It gets customized into many different forms. Mr. Scannell wrote a, a letter as, as the attorney representing Bridgewater Cares and pointed out that after the 2012 Medical Act was put in place, the Department of Health put regulations in place, and those regulations do in fact limit the sale from one medical cultivator to another cultivator. And I suspect that the, that the new regulations that'll be produced shortly will change some of that so that the sale can go on to others. But the retail market will eat into the marijuana, into the medical market considerably. And so if you can't sell the product you grow, then your business is at risk. And if your business is at risk, then you're going to find another location to do that business, such as Halifax. Halifax, if you read the, the paper recently, is considering a growing facility on the, near the border of Middleboro. Whitman is considering a growing, growing area near, on 18, near Sweeney Fence, I believe it is. And there's going to be a lot of other areas that pop up. So Bridgewater has an extremely good history of not doing well for its businesses. Most, most recently, most recently, an auto recycler who was planning to build in Bridgewater decided to go elsewhere. If you, if you're crossing 106 there at West Bridgewater, you can see the pest control, that was going to be built in Bridgewater, but again, they, they had headwinds that they couldn't overcome, and they built across the line in West Bridgewater. The revenue is not small. Don't, don't, don't think that it's just $100,000. It's much, much more. We're going to protect a business with this amendment that is going to provide, provide plant to other medical areas as well as other retail areas. And it's all legal, and if we ban the shop inside of Bridgewater, the shops outside of Bridgewater will exist and will eat into the market produced by these two companies. Thanks.
Further discussion on the amendment? Ms. Loesch?
Mr. Columbotes, in your amendment, it says all zoning districts except with the exception of marijuana cultivators. Does that mean a marijuana cultivator can open, we can have one in every district of Bridgewater?
This ordinance wouldn't address that, this would need to be addressed by another. Mr. Wood, perhaps?
Word, "accept" usually means exception, so I'm trying to figure out what that means. If it's allowed in all districts with the exception of these things, that means these things can be allowed in all districts.
That's what the, that's what the current reiteration of that amendment does say.
I should have been a lawyer.
You are excellent, I've always said that.
So if that's what you're intending, then that, I just want to ensure that's what your amendment is.
My intention, I guess this clause should really go after the word establishments, shouldn't it?
Well, I think it's whatever your, your intent is, and if you all are planning further amendments that relate to the specific zoning districts, that probably would be something left to another ordinance, or it would be something that would be amended in this ordinance and sent back to the planning board, because I think it changes the nature of the ordinance, which would then require further public hearing. So I, I, my understanding is there are other things on the agenda, but I think if you're going to amend this ordinance, this is probably the cleanest way to do it, but it doesn't prevent you all from doing further work relative to the zoning districts in which this type of exception is allowed.
Mr. Alves, if I could just...
Thank you.
Clarify for folks?
Yes.
And for me?
Yes.
Essentially, if, if I understood what Mr. Columbotes said in introducing the amendment, it is, it was essentially restoring the status quo ante. So essentially what we advertised and we were possibly going to vote on at our last meeting is now restored.
Correct.
Therefore, no additional planning board, no additional public hearing.
Correct.
And to alter that meaning in a substantive way would require essentially referral back to the planning board.
Absolutely. And in, in particular, if you're going to get as specific as saying, "This is an allowable use in Res A.B., this is an allowable use in industrial, this is a allowable use in this specific zoning district," you're, you're really narrowing down the scope of it, making more restrictive something that's an allowable use under Mass. general law. So I think it should be referred back to the planning board at that point. But what you have, if the amendment, I haven't heard you vote on the amendment yet.
We have not.
So if the amendment is voted on and approved, then what you have is essentially what came out of planning board through their recommendations and wouldn't require the republication and back to a public hearing at the planning board.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Further discussion or questions? Mr. Haley?
We do have the zoning issues and later on, later's kind of foregone conclusion at this point, but under other ordinance is under old business for zoning, in particular that I believe would layer on top of this amendment should it pass.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? I would just like to address a comment before we go to vote on this, that I believe Mrs. Hanson made about me being quoted in the enterprise, and I've been quoted both in the town pages and on the sports pages in my life, so I know how good the enterprise reporters are. They, the, the particular gentleman asked me about what some of the advantages were to the town and what some of the disadvantages were to the town. I think my position's pretty clear on where I'm going to vote on this amendment, and I was in no way offering support for another side of it, trying to in that article. I haven't read it, so I don't know what it said, but just wanted to address that so folks understood. All right. That having been said, further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, the clerk can call the roll on this one.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mr. George?
No.
Three in favor, five against.
All right. Moving on, so now, are there any other amendments on this? Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll move forward on the vote on the prohibition of retail sales.
We'll have discussion on that, correct?
I just asked for discussion and no one said anything. Do you, do you want to have discussion?
Yes, I would.
You can have discussion.
I would, thank you. Different talking points than the other seven times. During the Veterans Day Parade at the near, near at the end, someone yelled out a question to me whether I wanted to live near a retail shop. I think they said something else, but yeah, I wouldn't mind living near a well-regulated retail shop that has a serious investment, knows the risk to that investment for selling to underage kids. For several years, I lived down the street from a dealer. He had visitors all times of the nights. They pulled into my driveway more than once. There was no GPS, he had no website, he may have had a website, I didn't know about it. When we talk about gateways, he, I don't know what he was selling. Maybe it was just marijuana, maybe it was an occasional something else, but everybody in this town has someone like that living in their neighborhood right now, because it's, it's an unregulated market. The kids at the high school all know how to access the market. And when we talk about gateways and, and I, I know parents, I know multiple parents now that have lost their kids, it's a tragic loss, it should never happen to anyone. But when we talk about gateways, the gateway is often there because not only does the dealer have marijuana, but they have marijuana plus being laced with something else. They have marijuana plus, you know, I don't know what the party, party drug is, Molly's, I think it was. They have marijuana plus cocaine and heroin, and they introduce into those environments a well-regulated business somewhere in town, and I've stated, I've stated the plan where I think it should be, doesn't have any of those other pieces. It doesn't have any of those other pieces. It doesn't allow someone under 21 into the building. It doesn't sell to the 21-year-olds. It doesn't sell to, you know, just like a bartender won't sell to someone who is intoxicated, a, a retail shop won't sell to someone that's high. There's many, many laws that still exist on the books. They exist in Denver. You can't just go into a pot shop in Denver and take your weed back to the hotel and enjoy it. There are laws about where you can consume. There's other things that are happening in the state. You have to be aware of what our neighbors are doing. Our neighbors, some of our neighbors, neighboring towns will have retail shops, and that will affect the availability in our town, whether or not we have one or two shops in our own town. And if you read the notes on the cannabis commission activity right now, I believe it was at our last meeting, they're discussing about delivery, delivery status. So, the law, as you know, from 93G, 94G, 94G right here in front of us, allows delivery. And so, it, it will possibly and probably allow delivery into Bridgewater if you, if you can't buy it yourself. And the discussion, and it's just minutes, and it was probably similar to one of our committee meetings, you know, they're talking about just needing an ID to prove who you are and that when you called up your recreational shop over in Halifax and had it delivered to your address in Bridgewater, that you are who you are. And it will probably have two drivers, one to stay in the truck because they're gonna carry more than an individual would carry, and one that actually handles the delivery. It's, it's no secret, anybody that has a teenager knows that the market is here and exists, and it's more like the, the kid that lived down the street from me than it is a well-regulated shop. And so, consistent with what I've said all along, I'm gonna vote against a ban. Thanks.
Further discussion on the ordinance as presented without amendment?
Fitzgibbons, I have, through you to the town attorney, just, just for clarification. So, is this a situation where if this ordinance, as it is, it doesn't get approved, that we can't revisit this for two years?
That is correct. It's a zoning ordinance.
On the zoning side?
On the zoning side, so it's, it's a 40A Section 5 ordinance, and essentially, if it's a no vote, then yes, it's a two-year bar before it can be looked at again by the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Thank you for asking that, Mr. George, 'cause I was about to. Further discussion? Yeah, Mr. Haley, then Mr. Colum Baudis.
So, I, I don't speak much about, I mean, I've, I've been part of the ad hoc committee with the research, so I've been that, that guy that's spent way too much time as studying this. Professionally, most people don't know, I've been in regulatory affairs at a global level for almost 15 years, maybe a little bit more. So, when we talk about the World Health Organization, that's something I'm very familiar with. What I'm also familiar with is what every single country does in regard to controlled substances and uncontrolled substances, for that matter. The world model is allow and regulate, and we're a little late in that game globally, like we are in a lot of things globally. I am not ready to make a decision to ban. I will not support this.
Mr. Colum Baudis.
Whatever we do on this vote, I sure hope we do a whole lot, I hope we make some effort. There's obviously an opioid crisis in this, this country, and particularly in southeast Mass. I think we run the risk of, by passing this ban, kinda walking away feeling like, okay, we've taken care of the opioid crisis and we've gotten rid of that gateway drug. I don't think that's the case. So, regardless of how this pans out, I intend to confer with the town manager and my fellow counselors as to how we might address the opioid crisis.
Seeing none, clerk can call the roll.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Baudis?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Five in favor, three against.
So, the motion fails. Is there anything else the council would like to do on this? All right.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
You voted no?
Right, I can't?
No, you can, because you're in the prevailing side. I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Right, okay.
All right, you made a motion to reconsider. Is there a second? A second for discussion, Mr. Colum Baudis?
I'd like to pass the ban with the exception for the cultivators and to reinsert, so I'm making a motion to reinsert the.
Well, we're discussing reconsideration, then we can remake the motion if we want to. All right. So, I would say that, I, I would suggest that we not have three counselors decide that this has to go away for two years, but that's up to everybody else. Any other discussion on reconsideration? Seeing none, all those in favor of reconsidering?
Aye.
Aye.
You didn't hear enough. We'll call the roll.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Baudis?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Sorry, six in favor, two against.
All right, the motion is back on the table. Mr. Colum Baudis?
I'd like to make a motion to add amendment.
To the same amendment?
Yes.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that? A second for discussion. Mr. Colum Baudis, do you have any further things to add?
I'd really like to pass a ban on the sale of retail marijuana in town, and so, this is a good way to do it.
You know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make it work otherwise. If that's where people, if that's the hill people wanna die on, that's fine. I think that making sure we ban everything, we ban retail shops. I know Mr. Gallagher has something further on, but if we don't have zoning, I'm not sure, Mr. Rollins, how that works. Could you explain that to us?
So, yeah, as it relates to Mr. Gallagher's, I guess it's, and we're probably talking well out of order here, but since council, since the council president has brought the question to me at this stage, I, I don't think that such a ordinance or prohibition would be valid under 94G. 94G does allow for you to prohibit the operation of these facilities under a zoning ordinance. If that fails, then they are an allowable use in our town. You then would be entering a licensing prohibition essentially, which I don't think you have authority to do. But in addition to that, it would become an impractical or unreasonable regulation on their business, which you're also not allowed to do. So, I don't think that that would be a valid ordinance. I think it would be fine if the ban went through. And what a lot of towns have done is they've, they've allowed the ban and they've allowed the prohibition, just as extra support for what they're doing. But it cannot stand on its own.
So, now, if I may continue, Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
We have a couple of potential zoning ordinances also before us on Elm Street retail overlay usage.
Correct.
And so, if that were done, if, if the, if this ban on retail fails, which it has already once tonight?
Yes.
Then we would be in the position of saying, okay, if it fails, then we can't do anything for two years. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, you're essentially, you can't ban it again for two years, correct.
So then, so then we would have to have a zone for it, or otherwise, as Ms. Loesch pointed out, that it would be available in all, in all zones.
Correct. You, you'd have to in some fashion, or you choose to how you wanna do it. It's up to you all.
Well, we have, we have a couple of.
Options.
We have a couple of, of ordinances in front of us.
Correct.
Putting where a retail could be.
Correct.
Okay, so then.
It would seem to me that the Elm Street retail overlay would have to, I, I don't believe that's gone to planning.
No, it hasn't yet. I mean, we're not gonna do that tonight, but I'm just saying, as we play out the scenario down the road.
Correct.
Okay, so, to fail to pass this tonight prohibits us from banning retail pot shops for two years. We can move forward with a zoning ordinance for overlay usage for retail pot shops.
Correct.
On Elm Street or wherever we wanna put it, going forward, and so then, de facto, we have them, essentially.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the audience understood what was going on and what the council understood.
That is correct.
Okay. Perfect. Yes, Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two questions. Clarification. For, for towns that have both the zoning and the bylaws together, and in this case, we don't, obviously, the zoning one requires a two-thirds vote. We failed, we, we got the majority, we failed the two-thirds.
Right.
And we're down one member. So, a zoning, a, or, a regular bylaw, then you say, is not, would.
It would contradict 94G at that point.
I was, I was under the impression that a town needs either one, and that's not, you're saying it's not the case?
I don't believe that's the case at all, no.
Secondly, if, the second question, if this ordinance fails, is, can we put forth, if we chose to as a council, a ballot question to the citizens?
Not if it's the same question, no. Because it's already been something that's been voted on. So, so the, the way that the, the law states relative to 94G and the prohibition, it says that for this form of government, you all are the people to make that decision. If you make that decision and it fails, then it fails. That is a zoning amendment that has failed. It cannot be brought back up for two years under mass general laws, Chapter 40, Section 5.
Not even through, through a citizen's petition?
Correct.
Nope.
It's a zoning amendment, and it failed.
But could a general bylaw be brought back through a citizen's petition for a vote by the?
It could, in theory, but it would still have the, it would still run into the same legality problems.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment? Further discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? Ms. Holmberg, call the roll.
So, excuse me, we're voting on putting the amendment back in.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Colum Baudis?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Five in favor, three against.
Okay, so the amendment is back in, because that only required a majority vote to get back in. So, now, the, the ordinance as amended allows cultivation and prohibits retail shops, correct, Mr. Rollins?
Correct. That, if that's what you all are putting, I didn't hear the language read.
It was, it was the same amendment.
If it's the same thing that you read before, then that's exactly, I don't have it in front of me, so. What it says is, with the exception of marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana testing facilities is also defined under general laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1. And so, marijuana cultivators and marijuana product manufacturers, I know that I had read those definitions to the council on a prior date, but I, I can do that again so that the council feels secure in the vote. So, current definition of marijuana cultivators is an entity licensed to cultivate, process, and package marijuana, to deliver marijuana to marijuana establishments, and to transfer marijuana to other marijuana establishments, but not to consumers. Definition of marijuana product manufacturers, an entity licensed to obtain, manufacture, process, and package marijuana and marijuana products, to deliver marijuana and marijuana products to marijuana establishments, and to transfer marijuana and marijuana products to other marijuana establishments, but not consumers. Marijuana testing facilities, an entity licensed to test marijuana and marijuana products, including certification for potency and the presence of contaminants. So, that is the exception that you're now carving in, if, if this is the language that you all have voted to amend into it. And so, clearly, I don't see anything in there that relate to consumers at all.
Thank you.
So, so for the record, if this goes through, they cannot directly sell to consumers in Bridgewater, they cannot open a retail shop in Bridgewater.
That is exactly what the definitions lay out. It can only do those three specifically cited things.
Anywhere in Bridgewater, anywhere in.
We, we're taking a vote here, ma'am, we're having a discussion. All right. So, further discussion on the ordinance? Ms. Loesch?
And to be clear, for us to refine that is to pass another ordinance, or zoning ordinance, to go to the planning board at a later time.
Right. So, so I think if, if you pass this, that exception, right, you're, you're basically allowing for that use everywhere based on this currently.
Yep.
If you want to restrict that further, I absolutely think that's within your purview to do.
Okay, thank you.
You then would do it through another ordinance.
Okay.
And then, that would adjust the use table for those particular uses on our zoning ordinances.
Further discussion on the ordinance as amended? No? All right. So, we're voting to ban retail, I'm just, let me run this by, by you again, Attorney Rollins, 'cause I just wanna make sure everyone's got it right. We're voting to ban retail, but we're voting to allow cultivation to sell into retail in other places, so to speak.
I wouldn't use that terminology, because the term retail under the statute is.
All right.
You're making exceptions for the three definitions I just read, and nothing more.
You don't need to read them again.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. And so, now, if it's five to three against, then the, then it'll fail.
Fails.
All right. And if it's six to two four, or seven to two, seven to one four, or eight to zero four, it'll pass.
As long as it receives six-four, it passes.
Gotcha. All right. Sounds good. Call the roll.
I don't have a motion to approve.
I, I thought we, I thought we had one. We, we brought it back on the table.
You did, you, you had a motion to reconsider, but you amended it and you don't have an motion.
All right. We'll make a motion, then let's go through the charade again. Mr. Colum Baudis, make a motion to approve.
I may shouldn't make a motion, we approve.
All right, then we'll make a second to approve, then you'll make a motion for the amendment.
You already amended it.
Voted that.
How can we do that if we don't have a, if we don't have a main motion? Doesn't make sense. We'll do it the right way. All right.
I, I have a question on the, the vote to reconsider. Can the vote to reconsider change the language of the original vote?
Yes, because you're, you're reconsidering the original vote, and then you're voting an amendment on the reconsideration of the original vote.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, so do we have a motion and a second by Mr. Colum Baudis and myself on that?
Mm-hmm.
As amended?
Mm-hmm.
Which somehow we amended without a motion? And I don't.
Can we, just to be sure, can we make a motion to approve? Can I? We made, we made motion to amend before we made motion to approve.
Right. That's what I'm trying to say. Make a motion to approve after the reconsideration. Strike the whole last 10 minutes.
Rewind.
So, now, we're, we're back to reconsideration. It's been, it's been, it's been voted to, we can reconsider. Mr. Colum Baudis, would you make a motion to approve?
I would.
I'll second that for discussion. Mr. Colum Baudis, would you make a motion to amend?
I would.
As previously done?
Right.
I'll make a second to that, and then we'll have a revote on that. So, Ms. Holmberg, if you could call the roll on that revote, just to make sure everyone hasn't changed their mind.
On the ma, on the amendment?
On the amendment.
Just the amendment?
Well, wait a minute. Hold on.
We already did that.
Yeah, we did.
No, we haven't.
Whoa, 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 hold, hold on.
It was five to three.
Let's, let's, let's be clear here now. Um, so what we're voting on right now is the amendment. If the amendment doesn't pass, do we go back to a vote on the unamended ordinance?
Okay, so let, let, let's review for the audience, too, just, just so we're all, all on the same page together. All right, this is, this is what I have, and I'm going to look at the council clerk so that she can correct me if I'm wrong. All right, we had a, we had a motion in front of us prohibiting the retail sale of recreational marijuana. And then it was made, there was a motion made to amend. That motion failed. Right? All right, we went back to the main motion. The main motion had a vote of five in favor, three against.
Correct.
However, the main motion needs a vote of six of the council to pass. Therefore, the three folks who voted against the ordinance were in the prevailing side. By our, by Robert's Rules of Order, the prevailing side is the side that can make a motion to reconsider. At that point in time, Mr. Columbotus made a motion to reconsider. I don't know, was it Mr. Haley or myself who seconded it?
You.
I seconded it.
You did.
All right, so at that point, we had a motion, we had a motion on the table to reconsider. We then said, yes, we would reconsider. However, there was no main motion to then say, I'll make a motion to approve this. We continued to discuss it, making an amendment to a main motion that never happened. Therefore, out of an abundance of caution, Mr. Columbotus says, let's just erase the last 10 minutes, as we just said. He then made a motion to approve, to approve the ban, as done, and I made a second. And we all voted yes, but, well, no, we, and then I asked Mr. Columbotus, would he make a motion to amend, and I seconded it. So, right now, we're back to the amendment that Mr. Columbotus wanted originally, which would effectively allow, um, would prohibit retail shops, but allow all the other uses that the town attorney just told us.
And this needs a simple majority?
Yes, this needs a simple majority to become part of the ordinance, which we will then have to have a six, six vote on. So, Ms. Holmberg, if you could call the roll.
Yes. Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
All right, so now we have just unanimously voted for that amendment. Does everyone understand what they just did? Does anyone want to reconsider?
No.
Thank you, Mrs. Loesch, for cutting really quick. All right, so now, we have an amended ordinance. All right, and now, is there further discussion on the amended ordinance?
This needs...
Six votes.
Six votes, and if this fails, it's a two-year wait till we can revisit it.
Correct.
Ms. Holmberg, unless further discussion. Ms. Holmberg.
Yep. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
No, no, I'm just kidding, yes.
This is not the time.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Mr. Wood?
No.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Six in favor, two against.
Thank you. We, we still have, we still have a really long agenda, folks, and we've got to, we've got to keep moving. I apologize for keeping you here so long.
Don't apologize for coming to a town council meeting where things are happening. This is what we do.
We've got some...
We'll have a, we'll have a three-minute recess. All right, we do have a quorum of the council back, so we're going to be back in order. And we're going to move back into regular business, and we're going to move to license transactions. Item A, Petition P. 2017038, annual license renewal, renewals, common victuals establishment. Is there a motion to approve?
Some of.
Made by Mrs. Loesch?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, unanimous. Moving on to Petition P. 2017039, licensing of establishments with alcohol, marijuana, and attendant licenses. Oh, wait. I misspoke. Alcohol and attendant licenses. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. George, discussion?
Nope.
Mr. Haley, discussion? Any further discussion?
I will discuss. There is a note that you're going to withhold Skip's licensing.
We will withhold Skip's licensing until they comply with actually opening up.
Until they put a roof on the building, maybe?
Well, let's have them open up and have alcohol in it first. All right, with that, with that note, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we holding this?
We're holding Skip's, yeah.
And we have to vote on that?
No.
No, it's in the...
It's a note in, in...
Oh, I see, I see, okay.
That's a, that's an administrative text.
Sure, sure. He has a note, nothing's happened since he was in here.
All right, Petition P. 2017040, changing of hours of business operation for an alcohol license. Greyhound Group, DBA, looking to open from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Monday through Saturday, Sunday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, essentially looking to be able to open for all legal hours. I don't know if they actually plan on selling shots at 8:00 AM. The owner's saying no, but in case there's a funeral or some special function you need to post that you'd be able to do it. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Mr. George, discussion?
Nope.
Mr. Gallagher?
Done.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no presentation, we have no town manager's report, we have no discussion.
Thank you for waiting so long.
We have no discussion.
I, I do have one question for the town manager, if I could, so.
Point of information, did we vote to continue this meeting beyond 10:30?
Oh, wait, good point.
It's not beyond 10:30.
Actually, actually, you know what? You know what, we, we, there's a couple of things we did wrong, but keep going. That's okay.
Okay, great.
They're, they're all, they're all, uh...
Yeah, okay.
I raised the chair, that can be easily fixed by the town attorney.
All right, carry on with your question.
Mr. Wood?
Yeah, just, so since we had that hearing two weeks ago, not a stick of wood has moved on that building through two snowstorms and a rainstorm. Is, is he really going to continue, or are we just, you know, wasting time, time with him?
I can't imagine somebody putting that amount of money into a building and stopping midway, but I'll make sure that we follow up with him. I think it was very, you made it very clear to him that he was to follow up with us.
It's a, it's a fair point, but I think we also gave him an expectation of when we wanted him to complete that. I'm with you, driving by that all the time. I don't know why he hasn't accelerated it, but I think at this particular point, we have to let him run his course in order for him to deliver, because we did say March, no, what, we did, we did give him a day, right?
It was February, if I'm not mistaken.
Was it February?
I thought it was March.
It was either February or March. I, I just, we can go back to the record, but let's...
Open in March, complete, weather tight in February?
Yeah, but...
We're not going to be weather tight in February.
Council, what, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm, I drive by it all the time, you know, there's a hope there, but I think we were also very upfront with him that if he's got issues and he doesn't come back to us, then I think we're going to take a different approach. I don't think he can say that he isn't aware of that, so...
I think, I think I said, if you don't stop making progress, he'll be back here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Same place, without, without us going to result.
Right, and we also told him, we didn't expect to go to him, we expected him to come to us, so...
Right, right.
Okay.
Ms. Loesch?
Point of information, per the minutes in front of us, it's March of 2018.
Yeah.
The end of March.
All right, anything else on that, Mr. Columbotus?
Through you, can I, we just asked the town manager if there's anything pressing that he'd like to share with us, I realize it's late.
Mr. Dutton, is there anything pressing you'd like to share with us? Such as your ironing?
I will share one thing with you, because I've deferred my town manager's report, so I will share one thing, the, on the McKelwain. We have, obviously, the proposers are up against a fun, an application deadline for DHCD, and the council is, and, and we are still negotiating a purchase and sale agreement. So what I'm planning on doing is giving them enough, enough verbiage to give them what is considered site control for the, only for the purposes of applying for DHCD funding, and then we will continue to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement. If we can't resolve a purchase and sale and the council buy in, then obviously, the deal is off, but I'm going to give them enough verbiage so that they can go ahead and apply for state funding.
That's not the nose of the camel, is it?
What's that?
That's not the nose of the camel, is it? Put the nose of the camel in the tent, pretty soon you got the whole camel.
Oh, no, no. No.
Anyone else ever hear that?
Nope.
No. No, but it's 10:59, so...
That's a really important point. We don't want to be obligated to anything, we don't want to fulfill.
I felt what you were...
And, and you're not, so...
All right, anything else for the town manager?
No.
All right. Moving on, amend general ordinances vacant abandoned property. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George? A second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Columbotus. Mr. George, discussion? It's all been advertised, we've amended it, we sent it to advertising as a amendment?
And I, I've not heard of anyone having any issues with it, so I think it's ready to move forward and be approved.
Mr. Columbotus?
It seems like a long, long-awaited legislation. Attorney Rollins seems to think it's airtight, so I'd like to go forward with it.
Mr. Souza?
We, we definitely know of one place, there's no question about it. Is the property owner going to be given a written notice prior to the duty day requirement that he needs to apply for the... You know, for the...
There's a written notice for the property. They've got it.
He has to notify us that it's abandoned, right?
Mr. Dutton, does the property owner have to notify us it's abandoned?
Uh, we will not, we will, if voted, we will make sure that any property owner that we feel is, would not be in conformance with the, the ordinance, receives the full ordinance and an explanation via letter from me.
Thank you. Further discussion on the vacant and abandoned properties? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Oh.
Yes.
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 Mr. George?
Yes.
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
It's getting late, everyone's getting punchy. All right, moving on to resolution FY-18003, budget policy guidelines. Mr. Wood?
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
And then a motion to amend. So before you, you have the original resolution that I presented back in November, and you should have a copy of Tony's draft, which the Budget Finance Committee met tonight with the finance director and the town manager, and we've reviewed this for a couple of weeks. We recommend a complete replacement of what I originally presented in November with Tony's version. It, it joins a strategy and gives a line of sight to five years of projections, and, and manages the, the budget in a very systematic way, and I, I think it's a good replacement for now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Gallagher, seconds. Further discussion, Mr. Gallagher?
I agree.
Any other discussion on the resolution, Mr. Columbotus?
So this is essentially an amendment.
It's an amendment to replace.
Replacement, yeah. I would like a chance to read it, I haven't done that, so I would, I would recommend that we take no action tonight.
Is that problematic, Mr. Wood?
Yeah, it is, because the town manager and the finance director need to get, get moving on their budget. And, and we've discussed it a couple of times in committees. It, it should have been in the packet, but it, it wasn't, but it has been presented a couple of times. It's, it's a safe amendment, trust me.
Trust you.
We're not banning anything.
Trust, but verify, how about that?
All right, further discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Opposed? You voting no, Mr. Columbotus?
No, I, I support the amendment.
Oh, okay.
I might not support the final vote.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure, it's unanimous. All right, further discussion after the amendment. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, it's seven to one there. Thank you, Mr. Columbotus. All right, moving on, I would suggest under old business, item MA, that we table that indefinitely. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Do that? Made by Mr.?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Ms. Loesch, discussion?
No.
Gallagher, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, that's a...
Just out of principle.
What?
Just out of principle.
Yeah, seven, seven to one, or is it six to two, Mr. Haley?
Let's go six to two.
All right, six to two. All right, moving on, I think this is, this is what... All right, moving on, I want to take, yeah, so item MB, let's look for a motion to refer that to the Community and Economic Development Committee and Planning Board for a joint hearing?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Souza. Discussion, Mr. George?
No.
Souza?
No, I'll just be at the committee.
Okay, further discussion? Mr. Columbotus?
Through you, Mr. President. Mr. Haley, so this, this is not affected by anything we did today in earlier votes. This still makes sense as it's written?
This is Mr. Wood's semi-redundant version.
What am I looking at?
His is first, mine would be redundant, then.
I, I would...
So MB is, uh, 18-008.
Yeah, you're looking at two.
I'd be on a new business.
So, through you, Mr. President, Mr. Wood, does this still make sense in light of the earlier vote?
In light of the earlier vote, it still makes sense to me, yes.
Thank you.
All right, I, I mean, I, I'm imagining both MB and/or NA will ultimately zone Elm Street appropriately to avoid Mrs. Loesch's concern about all districts, and having it in one district, which is right there, where they are, right? All right, any further discussion on that?
Mr.?
Yes.
I mean, I assume some of the language in here will need to be changed.
I would, I would assume so, too.
That's why we're referring it to committee.
To conform with what we voted on.
Yeah, that's, that's what the hearing process is for. So I would expect it to come back in conformance with. All right, so all those in favor of sending to the Community Economic Development and Planning Board, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to NA, amend Elm Street Retail Overlay District. Again, I would send this to the Community Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board for a joint hearing?
If I may just...
Yes.
This doesn't change it, Mr. Columbotus?
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mrs. Loesch, seconded by Mr. George. Ms. Loesch, further discussion?
No.
Mr. George?
No.
Other further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of sending to the Community Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to Ordinance FY-18013, General Ordinance, Marijuana Establishments Forbidden. Is there a motion to send to the Rules and Procedures Committee?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Gallagher, discussion?
This is, I guess this can be brought forward now that the.
Mr. Rollins?
Zoning passed. Mr. President, if I could ask you through the, to the attorney.
I was trying to get Mr. Rollins' attention.
He's.
All right.
So now I think it would make sense that we have a general bylaw that mirrors the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would hurt so long as you're carving out the same exceptions that you carve out.
Sure.
Again, that's why we'll send it to the committee.
Right, and then we can work through that.
We want to conform with what we just did.
Right, as a bylaw.
And that'll be fine.
Four-hour discussion.
Mr. George, anything further on that?
No.
Any other further discussion on sending to Rules and Procedures? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to Order FY-18018, A Fixed Towns Clerk Salary. Is there a motion to send to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Haley, seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Haley, discussion?
No.
George?
No.
Any other discussion?
None.
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to Order FY-18019, Collective Bargaining Agreement Ratification, Bridgewater Police Association. I'll, we'll send to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. Is there a motion to so do?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Haley. Mr. Wood, discussion? Mr. Haley?
None.
Would the town manager like to give a quick rundown of the terms and conditions?
We have a very quick rundown. We negotiated a one, essentially a one-year contract, which is FY-18. The only real change is there's an increase in clothing allowance, uniform allowance. Compensation would be increased by 1.25% July 1, 2017, and 1.25% on January 1, 2018. Detail rates are increased slightly. Language, additional language provide more flexibility for both parties on how sick leave buyback is paid out for those, only those that qualify, obviously. And then we also added language that would allow management and the union to work out some mutually beneficial shift assignment changes. So that's about it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of referring to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Moving on to Resolution FY-18004, Town Council Clerk Performance Appraisal. I'd suggest sending to the Strategic Planning Committee, as we're already looking at the town manager, so it might make sense for us to do it in tandem. Is there a motion to so do?
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. This is just to make sure that we're all trying to make, you know, everyone make sure they're heading for the same goals. Obviously, we know the council clerk knows more than us about running the meeting after tonight. But we don't get paid, so I don't think you want to trade. All right. Any further discussion, Mr. Columbotus?
I just have a question. Have we raised the town clerk's, town council clerk's salary since she started?
Yes.
It's just the steps. It's, I mean, the council clerk is in a step grade, and I believe that the town, the council clerk has been given all the steps, but the hours that the council clerk is paid for is 24. In my view, and it'll be brought up, hopefully it'll be looked at at the strategic planning, in my opinion, the council clerk certainly puts in more than 24 hours a week, and I think that her salary should be reflected in that.
Thank you.
And just overall evaluation of the position.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of sending to the Strategic Planning Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Citizens' comments? Anyone from the citizens? Second. We have a real citizen back there. We have three real citizens back there, actually. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to allow?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've forgotten your name. It's so late.
I just wanted to say, I know cannabis stuff is very controversial. I do want to make myself available as a resource if questions come up in the future, even if it's just someone who reaches out to you. I'm happy to talk with them about cannabis, about, you know, some of the misconceptions out there. We are really looking to be collaborative partners here. We don't like being combative. We had to fight for our right to survive as a company, but we're really not here to try to, you know, stir up any negativity in the town. We believe in what we're doing, and we want the opportunity to show people that, you know, we can be a good neighbor. So please, you know, you have my contact information, but just please reach out to me if anything comes up in the future. We'll be here. We're not going anywhere. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Mr. George.
Long night. I just really want to wish everyone a happy holiday, safe holiday. I was commenting earlier during the break that, you know, it, believe it or not, for people, it's nice to see a lot of people in this room, very compassionate, very dedicated. So I hope it doesn't take topics that people are just really adamant about to get more people to be here, be informed, and also get involved. So hopefully we can get some of that as well, and look forward to seeing everyone next year, next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Columbotus.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons, for running a good meeting. It's not an enviable position you were in tonight. Secondly, I'd like to, I really am sincere in my desire to address, to see what we can do on the town level to address the opioid crisis. I'm not sure what we do now. I haven't heard much, and it's obviously a point of concern that affects a lot of people, so we need to get on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Just quickly, again, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight to speak on both sides of the issue. It was a good discussion, a long discussion. We've had a lot of those these past couple of months, but I think, you know, tonight we saw the height of it, and we made the decision, as we're supposed to do as elected officials, as tough as it might have been for some, I'm comfortable with the way we handled it, and I'm comfortable with the end result. And I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday and a happy New Year. See you in January, January 9.
Anything else?
No, not tonight. I would like to thank everyone. This has been quite a long, drawn-out thing that we did. Some of the people, as I was going out that way, they were trying to stop me from going where I was going. They were very pleased, okay? Their comment was, it wasn't exactly everything that we wanted tonight, but we're very pleased with the fact that we won't have the pot shops in our town. They thanked us. In fact, they said to council, because we came together and got this done, with all their help, of being out there all those nights. And I want to wish everyone here a happy holiday, and just think, we won't see each other for three weeks unless we bump into others at meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mr. Haley?
It sounded like Mr. Souza was looking forward to not seeing us.
They could say that.
It sounded like you were looking forward to not seeing us. So yes, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, all the good stuff for the festivities that we're going to be looking at moving forward. You know, we kicked off something that I was a part of, an earlier version, when I put my name in the hat to be on the council temporarily. We talked about that tonight, because we have our vacant seat. Maybe we can fill that seat this time and not leave it vacant, and we'll see what happens there. It was really evident back then that we didn't have any participation, there weren't any hot-button issues, and I would talk about local politics being the farm league for state and federal politics. And it's good to see people that would otherwise not be here get up and speak. We used to hear a lot about the new form of government isn't allowing us to hear my voice as a voter. The voters would say, the voting populace, you get your three minutes, nobody listens to you, they would complain. You have the greatest podium here that we've had in my history, in my 40-plus years of living here. The voice that you have now is focused, obviously, and I think it was a trying, but great exercise that we've gone through, and hopefully we go through some more large participation meetings and events moving forward. Won't get into any details about the marijuana and where things are, and that's, it's just good to see people involved.
Mr. Wood?
I think by now, people probably think I'm a pothead or something. You know, but honestly, I've never tried it, not even in high school, not even in college. I know, I'm just looking at you. Say, well.
Not even from your neighbor down the street?
Well, after everything I've learned about it, you know, there's always a possibility. But, you know, things are adaptable, so we need to see what our neighbors are going to do. We need to see what the state's going to do. We need to see what the commission's going to do. So we pass it in favor. We can make adjustments as we go forward, and that's what this council is really about, is that nothing's set in stone, is that we can make tweaks as we need to going forward. The thing that, I love everybody coming to this, the microphone and saying their mind, and it was long tonight and it's shorter other nights, but the thing that frustrates me, even though I really like this form of government, is that we can't just sit around for an hour ourselves and kind of brainstorm things out. We're, everybody out there gets a few hours to speak their mind. We, in contrast, get like three minutes, twice maybe, if the president's tolerant of it. And so that little bit of time, I think, doesn't really work well in government, and people need to do their homework, and the committees need to be strong, and the finance group needs to be strong, and it just makes it a little difficult to really talk through some of the issues that they're talking about at the microphone in the time that we're allotted. Other than that, it's a great experience. Have a great holiday, everybody.
Ms. Loesch?
Thanks. Just wanted to say happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy holidays, Happy New Year. So this was my first bout at being an elected official. I think this was one of the, the plastic band thing did throw me for a loop, but I think this was a little bit more intense, but I enjoyed the process, and I think Bridgewater is a really great place to live, and the people that were here tonight that were very passionate. There's 100 other million things that can get done in town, and if we have that level of passion on all the different committees, we would be, you know, the best place to live, the hottest place. We wouldn't have to worry about checking boxes on our real estate because everyone's going to want to be here. And I think we just need to keep that passion going beyond marijuana. So I implore people to stay involved. The charter actually is what got me involved, and is probably going to keep me involved because it's still not passed. But once that's passed, then I'll go off to greener pastures, but I just really want to encourage people to stay involved. I know you're probably sleeping by now, so you're not even going to hear this, but Happy New Year. I'll see you in 2018, and together we can, I think is what Keith says, so.
Yes, he does.
Thank you, Ms. Loesch. I just want to thank all of my fellow counselors here tonight. We agreed, we disagreed on different things, and that's fine. That's what we do. I know you're all here trying to do what's best for the town, and if anyone ever says something about any of you, I say, he, she is just trying to do what's right for the town, what they think's right for the town, and that was one great display tonight.
Thank you.
Everybody out here in the audience, the same thing. The Bridgewater Cares Group, passionate about the town of Bridgewater, wanted to do what's right. All the folks who came out who were supportive of retail marijuana, want, think that's the right thing to do, and wanted to do what's right. And when you can work together and make things happen, that's even better. So I want to thank everybody. I also want to thank the audience, who's no longer here. I'm pretending I'm looking at them.
You're great people.
For being so respectful and doing a great job, letting people speak, and just, you know, getting things done. I asked for no signs, and I asked for no buttons, and thank you, Mr. Columbotus, for that reminder, as you had suggested to me before the meeting. And everyone complied, and everyone wanted just to have a respectful conversation. I certainly hope that continues. I actually hope to be a part of it. My term is up in April, and I plan to run again and take out papers on the first of the year. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.